Two items related to the commercial rehab proposal will be removed from this agenda. And then, Professor Palmer, you in, or do you have something you would like to add?
Yes, after K two, I would like to add request for contract extensions of to our part-time employees.
So that would mean, I guess, K five.
Which employees don't?
She just handed us out.
You have, you have a memo explaining?
We can talk about it further when we get there. I know it's a little last minute. Are there any other?
Just point of clarification, you're removing possible action items on K, but leaving the previously scheduled
Hearing.
Hearing under public hearings.
Under I.
I one.
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. Thanks.
Will, at some point, I want to, I don't know if we could do that maybe at the end of the public hearing, just talk about kind of briefly next steps on this project, because we got a lot of extra information. I just kind of want to plan this out a little bit.
Sure, so the, the plan for the public hearing is a presentation from the folks who are asking for the commercial rehab district and then we'll have an opportunity for members of the public to comment and then we'll have some time for board discussion. How's that?
That's fine.
Okay. Any other changes? Someone prepared to move the agenda?
So moved as a minute.
Moved by riser, support by Brzeo. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Alright, the agenda is approved. Communications to Board of Trustees. Communications to the Board of Trustees.
Um, yes, they're all here. I just wanted to make sure somebody was running point on the letter from the neighbors of the Heritage Woods. It was, um, Mr. Spicer. Yeah, Mr. Spicer.
Oh, he sent the materials about easement and so on.
Yes.
Um, that should go, I believe that should probably go to township attorney, right?
Yeah, so I did send it on to the township attorney and to our planning commission consultant. I just wanted to make sure there wasn't anybody else running point on that.
No.
Okay.
So. I suppose it becomes a planning matter that we will be.
I know, oh, here, new time.
Alright, um, any other comments on communications? Alright. Uh, that brings us to public comment. This is a time for members of the public to speak for up to three minutes on any matter under the purview of the Board of Trustees. Uh, we hear first from those who are physically present here in the hall and then, uh, from those who are participating remotely. Is someone prepared to be our timekeeper?
You, you give too much time. Alright kids.
So, um, who's, who's handling the timekeeper?
Riser, Ken.
Okay. Um, is there anyone present who would like to make a public comment, um, here in the hall? Please come forward.
Hello, good evening. My name is David Spicer. Live at 525 Baker Road. South of the proposed Heritage Woods project. And I'm here tonight to talk about the proposed Heritage Woods Village project. I have any problems with this proposed project. Number one, dropping of my property by changing the address to my property. Number two, no set fee to use the proposed boulevard to access the properties to the south. Number three, is it legal to make a homeowner or visitor trying to get to my property on 525 Baker Road to go from an M dot road onto privately owned property, then back on M dot road just to get to my property on 525 Baker Road? Please honor my property deed set in place in nineteen sixty-three. I ask the board to consider postponing any further consideration of the Heritage Woods Village project until the developer and the property owners to the south, Dave Spicer and Eugene Cat, can come up with a settlement. Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah. Come your name.
My name is Kathy Spicer, K A T H Y, and I'm Dave's wife. So I live at 525 Baker Road. And now that this has gone to the trustees, um, I decided to say something, um, and support him on everything that he said and everything that we believe. I've lived there over thirty years with him and the property. Um, I feel too that you folks, I hope, will not pass this without further looking into it and uh, what he has already spoke to you about. You know, I kind of was brought up to use common sense in my everyday life and in my professional life. You know, that means sound and prudent judgment is used in practical matters. To me, Heritage Woods lacks that common sense even. You know, to look at it in general, I'm very simple person and, you know, that just is not passing to us. It's very, very, um, hard on us. I think we deserve better. I hate to say it. I don't know how else to say it. I feel like we're getting a little screwed. But I do ask that maybe you would meet with us. And I really encourage a meeting right at Baker Road, right at the top of our service drive where Baker Road is there, where the boulevard is to be constructed. And take a look at it firsthand with us and what it looks like and what it really means to us, not just on paper, not just on my cell phone downloaded, trying to read those blueprints. You know, and see the impact that's really, really there. Sure, you might drive by, take your own, but we would like to maybe have a meeting. And that's my, my feelings that, uh, it could get carried that far now that it's in the trustee's hands. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak to the board during public comment? Please come out.
Hello, I'm Bill Doty from four sixty-five Wood Grove in the Parkwood Condominiums. I'm here about SB twenty-one oh twenty-one, Aubrey Grove. Eagle, their Jackson office held its first public hearing in six years on January nineteenth, according to Jim Bales from Eagle. This was kind of a, quite a highlight. Hearing had forty-three attendees from the developer to Parkwood's governing board, residents and the community-minded CIO citizens. I want to thank the CIO community for their interest and support to work with Eagle to ask questions and make their statements concerning the proposed development. The quantity and the quality of the attendees' points definitely shows how impactful this development is to our community. A lot of comments came out about loss of wetland as well as the loss of trees. It was gratifying that this development is getting noticed by so many venues that hopefully this new development will contribute positively to our community and to CIO's master plan. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Kevin Jackson. I'm a resident of the Parkwood Condominiums and a neighbor of the previous speaker. I'd like to say that I was a, a participant in the Eagle Zoom meeting that discussed the property of Arbor's Grove. And it was very enlightening and very encouraging that the processes that we have to approve projects takes as long as it takes, because it gives the opportunity for other viewpoints to be considered. But for the people that were highly motivated to become involved in questioning the original proposal of Arbor's Grove, the property would be cut down and we would have water issues right now. When the Arbor's Grove people presented their, I guess it's their final proposal, why are we trying to shoehorn a dense project in such a small area? I heard some great alternative ideas to that plan. There's never been an alternative presented by Arbor's Grove. They've insisted on trying to put thirty-five units into and onto the property. I understand they can build forty-two, but just because you can do it doesn't mean you should. Just because you have a big garage doesn't mean a dump truck will fit into it. So I would continue to ask the board to consider denying this proposal as proposed. We're not against development. It would be nice if it was a lower density, keeping in character of the corridor, the corridor of calm between Liberty and Park Road. And I would like for you to still consider a lower density proposal to be approved and not the one that's currently on the table. Thank you.
Is there anyone else, uh, present who would like to speak during public comment?
Good evening. Alan Verbano, representing low-density Parkwood. Want to give you a small, short update on my last presentation. Recall, I shared the proposed underground detention system, which is normally used in industrial applications, which is a substitute for a conventional detention pond. And it comes with an extraordinary elevation difference, a full seven feet average between Arbor's Grove and Parkwood. Um, there's also a FOIA, a FOIA that's been submitted as of January ninth. Our intent is to try to search for other monsters-type systems like that that exist in CIO. Um, and Mr. Mark Thompson came out and visited us on January thirteenth to view the, the survey stakes and to get a little tour of the area. And all trustees remain welcome for our invite from December thirteenth, which still holds. I'd like to report, like Bill did on the successful last Thursday Eagle hearing, which he mentioned that we had forty-three attendees. And despite that high total, it's unfortunate to report that Parkwood's governing board chose not to give notice to all Parkwood residents. Our low-density group has no access to the official distribution and sent only a limited list. The quote was, "At this time, the board does not feel an additional notice to all co-owners is warranted." We had twelve low-density speakers, all critical of the proposed thirty-five units, and many referenced the petition signature, parkwood majority of sixty-three percent. Following public input, Eagle will deliberate and act upon this developer's application regarding the two fill-ins, which is point zero nine acres, and importantly, broad impact on the flood plan. And I might add, point zero nine acres sounds small, but it's actually over thirty-eight acres or so. So we encourage all interested parties to please submit by next Sunday, which is, uh, January twenty-ninth, to make comment or ask questions of the developer. And that should be sent to balesj, which is B A L E S J at Michigan dot gov. And to inform, uh, Low Density Parkwood conducted a successful town hall signature campaign. On February fifteenth, residents will have an opportunity to air their concerns to the governing board. This was a first-time, in-person, positive event where vital questions will get discussed and answered. And last topic, uh, site plan going back to the planning commission. We respectfully remind the Board of Trustees of their responsibility to act on their October twenty-fifth unanimous resolution to bring speakers forth on item twenty-one oh twenty-one. We believe a rightful go-back to the planning commission is justified based on the numerous design changes made. And as always, Low Density Parkwood submits that this proposal is not in the spirit of the CIO master plan. Thank you for your time.
I got you.
Alright. Good evening, Board. A couple of things this evening. I was going through the agenda. Uh, I noticed that there was no reports other than trustee Riser's report from last night's meeting. Thank you for preparing that. I was, uh, I was included as an extra agenda item, but it wasn't, it's a printed report. Um, I did notice that the budget and finance committee didn't have a scheduled meeting on the calendar when normally it would. Um, I didn't see a cancellation notice on that. I'm thankful that you're having Plant Moran here tonight present the audit. Um, one other thing I did notice, which probably looks more like data entry error or something else, but I noticed we purchased a chainsaw safety course, which is fantastic and makes sense for the Parks Department. There's three or four total transactions in the, that are split between the two accounts that are labeled chainsaw safety course in one way or another. It makes it look like some things, which may be an actual other expense, are somehow related to one item when maybe they're different things that were ultimately purchased. So as soon as that was on the one twelve check run on page five. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. I'm very happy to be here. My name is Joel Waddell. Uh, I know many of you, some of you are new faces. I am here from Congresswoman Dingle's office. I am Mrs. Dingle's field representative for Western Washtenaw. Um, so we just wanted to come out, um, as we head into the new Congress and new district now um, and remind you all that we are here as a resource, um, both the, for the public constituents and um, the board. We're here to, um, collaborate and support in any way you need, whether that be working on federal grants, um, working through issues with federal agencies, whatever it might be. Uh, Mrs. Dingle is excited to continue um, representing the, representing CIO and, um, supporting you guys in, in any way that might be, um, like I said, whether that's working through federal issues, even if it's just coming out to support at local community events and things. Uh, we would love for you all to flag those for us and, um, keep them on our radar, um, because she loves to come out and support even those, those local community events. Um, and as I mentioned, she's excited to continue representing CIO. Um, I will make sure that, send out a round of emails, make sure you, all of you have my contact info and, um, yeah, excited to, um, continue working with all of you. Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Thank you.
Is there anyone else present who would like to speak during public comment? Um, in that case, we are ready for remote participants.
Anybody interested in, uh, remote public comment? Please raise your hand. Yes, Rob Pattinson. Rob?
I'm sorry, Rob. What do you mean? It'll, it'll occur after the presentation from, uh, the Smiths. There'll be an opportunity for public comment at that time. Okay.
Thanks, Rob. Any other interested public? Please raise your hand. I see no other interested public. Will?
In that case, uh, we'll move on to approval of the minutes. We have three sets of minutes. The first, um, is for our special meeting on January tenth that preceded the regular meeting. So this is the meeting at five thirty. Are there any, in order to sort of expedite this, are there any changes or corrections to these minutes from the January tenth, five thirty PM special meeting?
I had no, no corrections. I just, um, when I was preparing these, I just noted on page seven. I just want to make sure this was accurate, because I know sometimes we have discussion and we don't take a motion. Just want to make sure this was accurate. Page seven, after discussion, it appeared to be the consensus of the board to schedule the public hearing regarding this proposal at the board meeting on January twenty-fourth. Creating a commercial rehabilitation district would also be on the agenda. The board may or may not take action. So that was my memory and what we had in the minutes, that we were definitely doing the public hearing and might be doing the district tonight.
That, I think that is correct.
Accurate? Okay.
Um, any other clarifications? In that case, is someone prepared to move adoption of the draft minutes from the January tenth special meeting?
So moved.
Moved by riser, support by Brzeo. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Uh, next is the regular meeting from January tenth. Um, and here I do have a couple of corrections. I noticed that, um,
What page?
Well, um, so on the first page, um, there's a, a kind of a, an error that occurs throughout. And so perhaps it's just simpler to just say, could you, could we correct pros um, to be all capitalized, uh, so P R O S, all caps.
Yes.
Uh, throughout. And then, and it's, I think, pros plan as opposed to pros project. I don't know if project appears elsewhere.
Sure.
Um, and then further down on page one, I'm not sure that all of this really needs to be in the minutes, but since it is, I wanted to clarify that what Hathaway said, uh, when we were considering, um, this item in adoption of the agenda was that Ms. Benson could speak during public comment, or the board could decide when J five came up whether to invite Ms. Benson to speak. Are there any other corrections to page one? Page two? Page three? Page four? Page five? Page six? Page seven? Page nine? Uh, here's where some of those pros plan references are.
I'll correct those throughout.
Right. Are there, actually, are there any corrections on any of the other pages that anyone has? Oh, I have one on page fourteen, unless there's something before then. Um, it's, I believe, um, under the motion discussion, it should be policies, uh, polices.
Oh, thank you.
And are there any other corrections? Page fifteen? Sixteen? Seventeen? Eighteen? Seeing no other corrections, is someone prepared to move adoption of those minutes as corrected? Moved by Noel, support by Carrie. Um, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Those minutes are approved. Brings us to the special meeting of January seventeenth. Are there any corrections throughout here?
And, and for this one, I did just attach the full report. We don't, we're totally consistent with that, but it seemed like that.
Okay. Well, obviously, we're not going to be making corrections for the report. So are there, are there any corrections to, uh, pages one through seven? Seeing none, uh, is someone prepared to move adoption of the draft minutes?
So moved.
Moved by riser, support by Brzeo. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Those minutes are adopted, or approved, sorry. That brings us to the consent agendas. Uh, someone prepared to move adoption of the consent agenda?
So moved.
Moved by Palmer, support by Brzeo. Uh, here we need a roll call vote because there is payment of bills.
And I just want to make a comment. I will get back to Ryan on his question. I think it was just one expense broken out across multiple departments, but I'll there for that.
Yes, and the budget and finance committee, just as long as we're responding to Ryan, the budget and finance committee meeting is, um, not occurring on Thursday. The twenty-sixth, I'm sorry. Um, so, um, someone ready to, I guess we've had the motion, um, all those in favor, oh, I'm sorry, we need to call.
Okay.
I got thrown out.
I'll call the roll and, uh, per our rules of order, I'm up, uh, first tonight, so. Flintoff, yes? Brzeo?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Riser?
Yes.
Hathaway?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Motion passes, this consent agenda adopted.
That brings us to reports, and our first report this evening is from auditors. Please come on up. Even Ashley, introduce yourselves and.
Sure.
Let us with the hour.
Alrighty. Um, well, thank you for inviting us this evening, uh, to present the results of the financial statement audit for the Township of CIO for the year ended March thirty-first of twenty twenty-two. My name's Dave Hellisack. I'm an audit partner with Plant Moran, and with me this evening is Ashley Fraz. She's a senior manager with the firm and oversaw, uh, the, and oversaw, conducted, um, the, the annual audit. Um, we did have three items today that we were going to cover, um, each different level of detail. The largest being the financial statement itself. Um, we're going to focus mostly on the opinion there, um, uh, but there's going to be some other information that we might reference during the rest, during our, during our coverage of the graphs. Um, the second item is the required communication to those charged with governance. Again, that, that's a, another deliverable that you received before this evening. Um, it's broken up into multiple sections and I'm going to walk through each, each part, uh, there. And then finally, the majority of our presentation, um, for the financial aspects will be the graphs, um, that were passed out this evening. It's just more of a high-level summary of, uh, some of the more important information, um, related, you know, mostly to, to, to the general fund, but some of the other activity that ran through the township for the twenty twenty-two year end. Um, so while we're not going to cover, um, the financial statement in, in great detail, Ashley and I did meet with township officials prior to this evening to actually go through it in a great level of detail. Um, there's a lot of information in this document, as you all have a chance to, to make your way through. So, so we did cover it. Um, we're available for questions at that point. Uh, make, made sure that, um, while we compile the information, because this is actually the township's financial statement, um, the only part of it that's truly ours is our, is the opinion. So the information is turned over to us for audit. We conduct our audit. We have a non-test service where we compile that information, um, in a financial format, present that back at the draft meeting. Board then has a chance to look at it. Um, they had two individuals that really, um, I'd say dove deep into it uh, from a financial, financial aspect, basically approved, approved the audit, and that's when we dated our audit opinion, um, at that point. As far as the opinion itself, it's an unmodified opinion, which is the highest level of assurance that we can give a set of financial statements. What that means is these statements as presented fairly reflect the financial position of the township as of March thirty-first of twenty twenty-two. That would include the balance sheet, the income statement, the statement of cash flows, there's a number of notes, there's some information as it relates to pension and retirement, um, healthcare benefits. So all of that, um, again, the highest, unmodified opinion, the highest level that we can give a set of financial statements. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Ashley. We're going to start walking our way through the graphs. Um, if you have any questions as you go along with the graphs, um, feel free to speak up.
Great, thanks. Um, so, so the slide one that you have in the, um, bound slide presentation there, um, as Dave mentioned, the first couple of slides, we'll be looking at. as Dave mentioned, the first couple of slides, we'll be looking at the general fund of the township, so the township's general operating fund. You can see in the blue, the state sources, largely state shared revenue, that continues to be the township's largest revenue source at one point nine million dollars for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two. The increase you can see in comparison to two thousand and twenty-one and two thousand and twenty. The two thousand and twenty census adjustment was reflected in the payments that the township received from the state in fiscal twenty-two. So, so that was the majority of the increase in those state sources. Local sources in the gold, you can see it increased just slightly. There was a contribution from the DDA to the township in fiscal two thousand and twenty-two. And then property taxes, it, you can see there's a slight increase there, pretty consistent the last three years, but slight increases in taxable values over the years. Moving on to the second slide, so again, this is the general fund. This is looking at expenditures by function for the past three years, two thousand and twenty-two being on the far right again. So general government expenditures do continue to be the largest general fund or operating fund expenditures for the township. Those are essentially the township's operations in that darker, darker navy blue color there. Public safety in the gray, so that did increase from prior year, and you can see it's more on trend with two thousand and twenty. So in two thousand, fiscal twenty-one, the sheriff contract, there was a kind of reduction in the services there and costs associated with that. So that normalized again somewhat post-COVID in fiscal two thousand and twenty-two. And then public works, you can see in the navy, just wanted to point out that fiscal twenty-two does include the legal costs related to the Delman, the motion made by the township that the general fund would pay those pass and some, some current costs back to the water and sewer. So that's what that kind of non-recurring expenditure was in public works there. Moving on to slide three. So this is the general fund's fund balance. So this is as of March thirty first, two thousand and twenty-two on the far right. This is just the components of that ending fund balance at, at a point in time. So again, looking at March thirty first. The, the teal there, that is the non-spendable committed or assigned. So those are mostly, that relates to the one point four million dollar advance that the general fund has due from the fire fund. So that is a receivable in the general fund, but it's not available for future spending at, at that point in time. Just so it's considered non-spendable fund balance. And then there is a million dollars that, that related to the township's fiscal twenty-three budget. There was a budgeted use of fund balance of about a million dollars, so that is reflected as assigned as of March thirty first, two thousand and twenty-two. And then looking at the orange column, so that five point six nine million dollars, that's unassigned or essentially available fund balance. So that does include your, the property tax collections from the December property tax cycle. So when you're a March fiscal year end, making sure you're cognizant that your next, you know, significant tax billing cycle is nine months out from that point in time. So when you're looking at that fund balance, remembering that, you know, a significant portion of that has to take you over the next nine months as far as cash flows. This doesn't, I did want to mention too, this doesn't include, there's six hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars of ARPA dollars that were receded and not yet spent as of March thirty first, so that isn't reflected in fund balance. The cash is sitting in there with an unearned revenue as of March thirty first.
ARPA, the rescue plan act, one second.
Slides four and five, so, so they present very similar things, each one for each different school district, but this does present all of the homestead property tax millages that are billed by the townships to the residents. But it does kind of show out, you can see the pieces of the pie. The township only keeps that orange portion. So essentially, when, you know, a taxpayer comes in to pay their property tax bill, all of these millages or amounts are on the bill. The township does collect those and then remits them back out to those other taxing authorities with the exception of the township's mills that are showed in, shown in the orange there. On, on slide five, this is same as the previous slide, but that, again, eleven percent of the total is essentially what the portion of the township keeps. Slide six and seven, so shifting a little bit from the general fund, so the water and sewer fund. So this first slide on slide six shows the operating revenues in teal and operating expenses in gold for the water fund for the past five years. You can see that operating expenses have exceeded operating revenues for each of those years. There is an annotation at the bottom that this does include depreciation expense, so that is a significant component of operating expenses. And did just want to point out, it's not always a negative connotation when you have operating expenses in excess of your revenues. But it is important, you know, to continue to monitor that during the budget process when you're looking at current rates or reviewing rates or rate setting processes that you're ensuring that the long-term picture, you know, for the water fund, and then we'll look at the sewer fund as well. So sewer fund on slide seven, pretty similar as it relates to operating expenses. That does include a significant piece being depreciation expense on the significant infrastructure in, in the sewer fund. As I noted for the water fund, you know, thinking about the ending net position or the accumulated net position when you're, you know, looking at the operations year over year and your billing rates when you're setting the budgets and future capital needs, all of that stuff. Any questions on the slides I covered or the financial statements at all?
If none, I'm going to refund.
There's a question on, sorry, is it water?
Sewer and water?
Yeah.
Are, are they kind of close? What for depreciation?
Sure, yeah. So the water fund, the annual depreciation for two thousand and twenty-two was five hundred and twenty-seven thousand, and for sewer it was four hundred and sixty-five thousand.
So are rates where they should be given our collectibles? And what we, you know, are, are, is it?
Well. Yes, and well, yeah, when you, when you, it's not always a yes and no question. I think when you're looking at revenues and expenditures in a, in a water and sewer, any sort of enterprise type fund, you've got to look at it over, over a period of time and what the long-term goals are. So I would say if we took up the, took up the, took it the, a look at the funds individually, they both look pretty healthy. So, so regardless on whether or not there's revenues and expenditures, it's part of the rate setting process that the township should be going through on an annual basis. As part of setting that rates, it's taking into consideration not only projects maybe in the next twelve months, but, you know, maybe out up to three years. So those are, you know, continual, expected, non-operating outflows. So you need a res, potential resource for that. You'd also want to keep in mind what your ideal working capital is. So, you know, when, when you're going through your budget, in the general fund, for instance, you're probably mostly focused not only on the revenues and expenditures, but where your fund balance at, is at. When you're dealing with enterprise funds or business type activities, you're really more focused, not, not, it's, the economy's a little different. So instead of net position, which is almost equivalent of that fund balance, it doesn't really tell the whole story. You want to be more focused on working capital, which is the difference between your current assets and current liabilities. So when you're taking that all into account, you're doing an analysis that says, okay, what does our rate? What should our rate be over a period of time? A lot of times, I don't, I'm not exactly sure how the township does it. Some, some rates, some folks set, or some communities set rates annually. Some will take a look over three or four year period to see where they need to be. But really, I think the answer is, you know, I could say, what I would say is both are relatively healthy. Is the working capital where the township expects it to be for its current needs and its future needs? And that's really a question for you all to answer.
And if you're doing like rolling out things or something breaks and we got to fix it?
Yeah, yeah, so you'd want, you'd want to have enough for obviously some emergency, if, if, if something breaks, you know, you want to have enough on, on, on hand to be able to handle, to handle something. You're not, not, you know, how long it takes to bond. If it's, it's a big, if it's a big break, you want to have enough in reserves to take care of, of whatever problem you've got. But there's also the long-term look at infrastructure. What's the needs of the system? How old is it? Is there a, some sort of replacement plan? Is there an expansion going on that we, that you need to, to address? So it's not when you're setting water and sewer rates. Maybe there's a basic, let's say, plan as to how the process might work, but you can necessarily go to your neighbor and say, okay, what did you do? We're doing the same because your needs within the system and your resources are going to be completely different than your neighbor's. So.
We'll say our stuff's fairly new, isn't our infrastructure?
No.
Well, it's not new.
Eighty-five.
Well, so it's not a hundred years old.
Yeah, it's, I guess it's, when you're talking about, when you're talking about water mains and sewer pipes, I think, you know, new is relative. But yeah, we've had it for a while. It was, it was, there was inspection relatively recently that determined that the condition of the sewer line, for example, along Jackson Boulevard is pretty good condition. But it's old in the sense of, you know, infrastructure.
Yeah, I mean, there's some pipes in, you know, Detroit, for example, right, only ten years old, so.
We're young, we're young by those standards.
Yes, yes, okay.
Sorry, go ahead.
And then another ratio you'd want to kind of pay attention to is water loss. So, so the water loss ratio is really the difference between the units you bill versus the units you buy. You know, so ideally, that number is relatively low, and when I say relatively low, you know, in and around ten percent is actually a pretty good number. And, you know, that, that analysis should be done, you know, quarterly maybe internally. We, we take a look at it as part of our analysis on, on an annual basis from, from an audit perspective. Why I bring that up is in some, in some instances, problems with the system aren't always apparent. Especially, and I'm, I'm not an engineer by, by, by any means, but, you know, there are instances where water lines are so close to sewer lines that a water line could have damage. And instead of Lake Sio appearing, it's right next to a sewer line and the infiltration drums right in the sewer line. You never see it until you do the analysis and say, okay, why am I, you know, why are, why am I buying twenty-five percent more units than I'm billing out? So that's, you know, from, from an analysis standpoint, you'll hear that term a lot. You know, you hope it never becomes an issue, but really you're looking for trends from the water side. There's not really a similar analysis from the sewer side. Long answer to a short question. As far as the communication to those charged with governance, so we had three, we, we have a document that's broken up into three parts. The first part being the internal control related matters. The second, the official required communication to those charged with governance, and then the final section is the legislative and informational items. Not required, but information that we want to ensure we pass along to the township. Beginning in section one, the internal control related matters. So as a reminder, really, the audit is, is set forth to give an opinion on, on the financial statements, and, and we did do, do that with the unmodified opinion. We do consider the township's internal control as it relates to financial reporting matters, and we do test that. We do test those controls with the purpose of bringing the, the risk of material misstatement in the financials to an acceptable level. So we're doing it, the internal control assessment, for that purpose. When we come across weaknesses in those systems, the standards require us, when they reach a certain threshold of a material weakness or a significant deficiency, to communicate those deficiencies and weaknesses in writing in this letter to this board. So beginning on page two and going on to page three, you'll see that we've identified five material weaknesses as a result of this year's audit. The bullet pointed there and I'd spend a little bit of time in, in each one. So the first one is the cash and receipts deposit. So I think most, if not everyone, is aware, there was a, an issue with a deposit back in February. Monies were collected at the counter and deposit slip was filled out. Didn't get, didn't end up getting deposited at the bank in that February statement. Ultimately, there was some investigation done in that matter. But our, our finding is really related to, yes, the, the township did detect at, at some point that there was a deposit that didn't make it to the bank. But the reconciliation, the resolution to this matter, especially the resolution, I think, didn't happen until May when the letters went out to the taxpayer. So that would be a longer period of time that, than you, than you expect for something like, for something like that. So, you know, what we were suggesting is, when you're taking a look and, and really trying to implement the controls as far as the receipting process, is, you know, you've got the daily receipts or however often the township chooses to make those deposits. You're reconciling those to the drawers, you're filling out a deposit slip. The deposit slip goes in, into the bank, it's then maintained, and someone's tracking the deposit slips. So that, you know, really setting the system, we, we, we covered this. This is one of the items that we, that we covered in part of our meeting. It sounds like, you know, prior to this even being discussed, there's been some changes in the process as far as reporting and recording the information that would hopefully leave something like this in the future.
David, do you want us to ask you questions as we're going through?
Absolutely.
I had emailed you questions and you had said you were going to integrate them into your presentation tonight. So, but now with this specific area of cash receipting, I guess I want to know, how can we improve it? How can you give us an operational definition so we know specifically what the specific actions would, would be to improve it so this never happens again? And you've kind of done that here, but could you go into a little more detail?
Yeah, I, I mean, so in this, in this particular situation, I, I think the importance is, you know, so like I said, when, at any point in time when a drawer is closed, you run in a tape. So you're, you know, being at, you know, checks or cash or whatever, but you basically are, you've got a record through your system as to what the deposit should be in that, or what was run through that drawer through, through that period of time. Someone then takes that deposit, compares it to the count. So somebody's actually doing a cash and check count, making sure those equal, right? So we, we move back, move past that point. Deposit slips prepared at that time. Our deposits prepared before it goes to the bank. Deposit slip goes to the bank, money's deposited, comes back, deposit slip is secured. Made sure that it's kept on, kept on record. Move on. I think at some point, there must have been, the, the part that must have gone sideways here was the deposit slip that came back from the bank that day never made it back into the financial records. Because I think, as a result of it, it was determined that the monies hadn't been deposited. Not sure what happened. But ultimately, it required the township to go back out and ask for receipt of those monies again, or those checks. So that's, you know, so that's, I'll say that's high, you know, very high level. I would say, you know, even the township would have to do what it feels is, is the best control. That would be a control.
Okay, so I'm not a CPA.
Yeah.
I don't know what the best control is, and I've been talking to people. I'm trying to understand what's the best, what do you advise for us?
I would advise something similar to what I just laid out.
Okay. And is that happening now?
We haven't tested, or, I mean, I, we haven't tested this year's. We can go by discussions with management that there's been improvements in the system, but we have not tested anything that's happened in the two thousand and twenty-two, twenty-three fiscal year.
It's a pretty standard procedure.
Yeah, it sounds reasonable.
Yeah, you do a thing called a C out of the drawer. It's a C.
C tape. I, I, we, we use the term C tape, but not every place it's a C tape, so I didn't want to use that, that term.
Typically, I have to make the deposit, you always, maybe the deposit slip gets stapled to the deposit slip. So now both those records are kind of attached to each other. So I have a deposit record, I got the receipt for the bank, those two are together. So you say I deposited this, the bank says I deposited this, we're all good.
Okay.
And those are typically recorded in files.
I just want to, I'm trying to understand. I mean.
What happened?
What happened and are we doing this now, Donna?
We're doing exactly what he suggested, have been doing exactly that forever.
Pretty common procedure.
But we had this problem occur when we had a problem and there's a little more to it than, you know, what you, what you've explained tonight. And I wish I knew what happened to that deposit. It was made, as I've said before, in public, taken to the bank. And when they went to do their piece, they said, this doesn't balance. Well, I said, then give it back to me so I can go back here and find out why. I got the deposit, I brought it back, and I have no idea what happened to it from that point on. It was discovered, as you said, in May, but we were that far behind in reconciling from closing of the books to the previous fiscal year and then going forward. So I won't disagree, it's a long period. And I do believe that, that has, you know, been addressed to try and get it done sooner. But that's where all of this time lag appears to be.
Was it in early May?
I'm, well, I don't know. I don't know what part of May that they discovered it when reconciling the bank statements.
And if I made, if I made, Donna, I think the, the bank statements, in reconciling the bank statements, that was the, at least one of the first.
That's when they discovered it.
Yeah, when Rebecca was reconciling the February bank statements, I think in probably late March or April, I mean, Rebecca was also dealing with quite a personal issue. So, but that was probably about the first time. And then I think Donna had letters out by?
Immediately.
May.
So how many times has this ever happened before, Donna? Is this like a?
Never happened before.
So once in thirty years, we had.
We have a process.
We reconciled it to her.
Yes. And we do it exactly as Plant Moran has recommended. That's the process we do.
I can add just one thing to, to this, and it's, it's actually a positive, so, you know, this is.
Whatever.
Is, actually, I said at a lot of clients where we have to report that communities are nine months behind in doing their bank recs. It's not, it's not as uncommon. It might not be nine, but it could be three, it could be four. And you learned right here why timeliness of bank reconciliation is important. Because if there is an issue, and, and I'll use a, a different timeframe, let's just say it's your, a collection that you have in October and you don't identify, you're doing your bank recs in January or February, you're trying to figure out over a four-month period, what specific day, go into your bank, try, nobody, I mean, barely remember what I did, you know, last week, let alone a specific pot, deposit, three, you know, three months before. So again, it kind of reinforces the importance of, the continued importance of timely bank reconciliations.
And I'd say realistically, we're within about sixty days.
Yeah, I, I'm just, I'm not, I'm not critical of the timeliness, but just to reinforce why it's important.
We're doing better than most.
Right. Why it's important. The second item, segregation of duties. So during the audit, we identified an individual with access to, to post adjustments to the general ledger and also had access to cash receipts and custody functions. We recommend that the township implement adequate mitigating controls over further or further segregate these functions in order to avoid misappropriation of assets. So while uncommon for the township here to get this, in a lot of smaller units, we do see individuals that do run into this, you know, if you've got a small community and you've got three, you know, three folks basically in the office, there's going to be instances where you've got that dual custody of assets and an ability to, or I'm sorry, custody of assets and access to the general ledger. The key is, when you, when you're in those situations, is trying to set up mitigating controls to keep the positions as segregated as possible. So in, in the instance here, the recommendation would be, you know, if there is an absolute need for someone who has custody of assets or handles cash to have access to the system, is there a way that can be a read-only access and that someone else, they can present and, and suggest journal entries, but have someone else post them? That is an example, not the only, but really having them mitigating controls. And to be honest, it's to protect that individual. Because if you've got an individual who has access to controls, I'm sorry, access to cash and then has the ability basically to write journal entries, and something goes sideways in the financial statement, first person everybody's going to look at is the person who had access to cash and the ability to move the journal entries around. So in those, you know, in this instance, you know, it's really, you know, up to the township. Best practices would say, you know, to the extent you can to try to keep those separate. But if it's absolutely necessary to set up some sort of mitigating control to keep that risk at as low a level as possible.
And, and Dave, a couple of questions on this, just to, because I know we have a couple of new trustees, new administrator. I want everybody to be connecting issues. Which individuals did you identify?
Well, we, I mean, we know for a time period that the deputy treasurer did have access to the ledger.
What period of time?
Uh, I think it was actually post-year out. But we, we know post-year in for sure, there may have been some, the post-year in being post-March 31st of 2022, but access back into the 22-state ledger.
Has the access ended?
I don't know.
You wouldn't know.
I can't answer that. I, yeah, I, I'm sorry. If I knew the answer, I'd answer that. But we're not, again, testing into the 22 or 23 period. That's not part of our scope.
Absolutely. Okay. And at the time when this was happening in May, that the advice you gave hypothetically was exactly the advice you gave to us, that if, even over the objections of the clerk, for some reason, the township, other officials, give access to the general ledger, to the deputy treasurer, deputy supervisor, to have it be read-only. Or maybe write, write the journal entries and have somebody else enter or something like that. And so I, I will say, you know, this, this finding here is a result of when the policy of the board, the prior policy of the board was implemented by the prior interim administrator. The person who had access to the general ledger was always the finance staff. When Sandy Egler moved, moved from finance director to treasury, she moved to have him read-only access. And then that was changed back.
The one thing I want to make sure of, a, as we go through all of these discussions, is these are items and areas that we came across during our audit. You know, we, we are not in charge of what the township chooses to do. In each of these, in each of these cases, we're reporting what we found, trying to give an example of perhaps a best practices, that it's up to this body to understand what we found and really make a policy decision based on the pros and cons. Because the answer to these, I can tell you, the answers without going easy is, thank you, Dave and Ashley, we understand the risk involved and this is what we're going to do. That, yeah, but I can tell you, especially in the segregation of duties, let's just say it ran out the exact same way and the township came to a conclusion, they wanted to get, that's fine, but we're going to have this exact same finding next year because we're going to come across this and, you know, and, and that's not bad, that's no good. Our job is to report to you what you find. What we, I'm sorry, what we find. And then you make decisions.
To mitigate that.
Yeah, you make the decisions.
So in your report, you state individuals other than the deputy treasurer.
Well, there's going to be, there's going to be cases, just when you've got, when you're short-staffed, where there might be somebody who's got access, that has to cover the counter for a short period of time. So when you've got those instances, just make, again, that might be, so, yep, we understand somebody's got to cover lunch and there might be a cash or somebody's got to receipt something through that has that ability. It's, again, making sure that the township is thinking about that and saying, okay, we understand that risk, we've documented it. You know, it might be thirty minutes a day, three days a week on, on the coverage. Or somebody's sick and you've somehow, you know, you've got the best-laid plans, but you don't have the staff on a specific day. So that's, that's going to happen. Again, we're aware of it, so, by the way, we're, we, we don't give absolute assurance. We came across to this, we tested through this. So we tried to get comfortable, you know, though, while we don't get absolute assurance that we didn't see anything that looked unusual in nature as a result of that. But got comfortable that it brought the risk of material misstatement to an acceptable level.
Question with respect to the findings. You, you identify the individuals through interviews with people or from looking at the records or looking at township or policy?
Yeah, it, it, um, it could be all. And this particular thing, I mean, we had access, so we could see who makes journal. So one of our steps is we ask for all the general journal entries that are made throughout the year, so we can see, we get a listing of who signed in as a general journal. And if we come across someone that we know has got access or custody of assets, then, I mean, that's, so it, it could call up anywhere, I can say that's a general test that we do that we look for it, because we do test, you know, we test on internal control, not only the cycles, so the processes and procedures, but there's management override. That's really what, you know, that's going to happen. There's going to be things that are outside the system and adjustments that need to be made. And that's why we ask for the listing and the download of not only what those entries are, but who made them.
So with respect to, your recommendation is that we implement adequate mitigating controls or further segregate these functions. Is that something that the board does to a policy? Or do we tell our township manager, hey, implement this?
Well, I, I think that falls down to your policies and procedures. So, you know, I, I would, I would feel, again, I'd be careful because I want to, I don't want to try to implement, implement an internal control system for the township.
No.
Really, you know, so the township needs to, to measure its current procedures and, you know, identify its current procedures and policies, what you're doing as it relates to custody of assets in particular. Authorization comes in, but I, I mean, while important, let's just focus mostly on the, on, on the bookkeeping and, and to the extent you can keep those two functions from interacting, that's best practices. In instances where you need some overlap, having some sort of policy in place or procedure where, when there's a need for that, there's some sort of mitigating factor. For instance, you know, hey, X individual needs to, to write this journal that they've got read on, but Ashley's going to write it and she's going to give it to me to post. So she can't post anything because she's handling, she's collecting all the cash.
Right.
So now I've got it as a bookkeeper, I'm looking at it, making sure I understand it makes sense, now I'm posting.
And that, that one of the mitigating.
And that's really, really what you're trying to do, the extent you can.
Yeah, we brought in Nick after the fact as a mitigating.
Thanks. Just, just to be clear.
Sure.
We're talking about best practices, we're not talking about a law, for example.
Absolutely not. That's why I wanted to make that clear. We're, we're, we're communicating what we find. It's up to this body to take that information to determine what to do with it. That being said, I suspect, because this was a report, you, you probably got a communication from treasury saying, you've got, you've got this and, you know, can you answer this, that or the other? I mean, we don't get copies of, of any of that, but this is just reported out.
And, and I do want to.
Again, not the law, but your answer, there is some response you probably have to.
I do want to say one other thing is that though this happens in small townships, I will say we have, we, this is a new finding for us. It has been mentioned before, but in recent audits, we, we haven't had this and it's, so there's something different about this year.
Um, David, in response, you mentioned treasury and the letter from treasury that we received. Yes, we received it. I contacted Corey Vaughn.
Carrie, Carrie Vaughn.
Carrie?
Yeah.
Carrie. And we spoke at length. We're going to talk again. He's answering many of my questions. But one of the things that he emphasized was that the township needs to make decisions to improve this situation. And, you know, we need to make the requisite changes. We need you to give us suggestions too, for what those changes might be.
Right. And that's, that's what I'm trying to do without setting, I mean, if I, I go, I'll go back to, you know, we, we were contacted much earlier in the year, I think, by some folks from the township and even some folks outside of the township. There was a discussion on what we can do and we can certainly assess current suggestions and give, I'm sorry, current systems and give suggestions. What we cannot do is set up and implement your control system. Because then in essence, when we're assessing that control, we're auditing our own work and we're no longer independent. Not always easy for folks who aren't involved in finance to understand that, but it is an important distinction because we need to stay independent of this, not only the reporting measure, but the internal control. We can give advice all day.
So let me ask you this, let me ask you this way. So what are the processes we have in place? Because I, I think that is a serious, or could be a serious challenge, it has been, but I think very distinct, you know, role-based access does make sense, or crud, or access control, as to, you know, using a typical acronym we want. So I think we've kind of settled on role-based, which I didn't know they had, that's the easiest one to do, by the way, when I heard that. Awesome. So we've got a process in place, we've asked our clerk to say, hey, you defined it because who should have access and who not to make sure she, her statutory duties and fulfill hers. And then add onto that, make sure that all the other stakeholders, such as Donna, such as Mr. Hathaway, such as township administrator can fulfill theirs as well. That's the process we have in place today. Define all that, put it in writing, and then make sure it's enforced and it can't be changed. Once everybody agrees to it, it's all good. Nobody go in there and play, you know, willy-nilly with the, with the access rights.
And we're going through that, I think it's important, you know, but let's not just focus, be in a tunnel on this thing, on, on just finance, there's many aspects. There's, I'm certain there's parts of the system that treasury should have.
Right.
That finance shouldn't be touched. So it's, it's making sure it's not blind cover, it's like a step back and make sure we keep everything separate.
We just have to start with, we've got to start somewhere, right? Somebody has to kind of kick off the process. So we've asked our clerk to kind of kick off that process. And then when she's done with, make sure that Donna blesses it, make sure our supervisor blesses it and our administrator blesses it. So everybody is comfortable with their access rights so they can fulfill their statutory duties.
And in those few instances, and hopefully there are few instances where you, both sides need access, bringing in that mitigating control to make sure that everybody's covered. Again, this is to really protect the person or individual that's, could have access to both. It is to protect that, I would think they'd want that, just in case something went wrong or above reproach, because they didn't have the ability on this side or didn't have the ability on this side, or if they did, had somebody coming over the top to look at it to make sure it's all right.
Good. Amen. All right, we beat that one pretty good.
Sorry, sorry for your fault.
Tax billings.
Yeah, number three, again, for the, for the fiscal year, township missed, missed billing a couple of special assessments and some accounting, accounting damages on the, on the tax roll. While the township did detect this and billing will be out on the next, next tax cycle, the township's detection was well beyond, you know, the range of time the internal controls. I think that kind of is sad because the control, internal control cycle would have been before it actually went out. So I know everyone's aware of this, probably shouldn't be a surprise to, to anyone, but it's just ensuring, you know, that before that goes out, maybe it's a second review to some, from somebody who has access to all that information, a, a second set of eyes has never been heard on it.
How do other townships do it?
I'm not sure. I just, I, I don't want to say I've not run into this before, but normally, it, I, we've seen it before, it's, it's, we, we don't see it often. And to be honest, we don't get too much into the printing of it or, or get into it. We, we, you know, in this case, it's more of, this is what we expected to see and why didn't, why, you know, why didn't it happen? So I. So I, to be honest, I, on this one, I don't have a great suggestion other than the process should include a second set of eyes. If it doesn't right now, you know, which may include, okay, you know, we've got all the L forty twenty nines. Let's make sure we've got all those. And whoever's looking at all the L forty twenty nines from the different entities that that's getting on. And all right, what, what special assessments went out on last year? So that makes sense that there's not one on this year. Yep, all the, all the roles are completely paid off. And that's a review of the minutes perhaps of, okay, what special assessment roles got approved for the first time this year, and they should. So those would be some of the things that if not being done, you may want to consider from both, really, really what you're focusing on is completeness of, of the bill, right? So what are, what kind of resources are available to ensure everything that the township is supposed to get on that bill ends up getting on that bill? Now, fortunate enough, there was the ability to get that, you know, later. It's just a matter of it being a timing issue of when the cash comes in.
Yeah, we're just talking, I mean, I don't know why you would just kick off some kind of electronic workflow, right? So as long as we've got a workflow process, we've got it documented, they've got a sharepoint site, we know where that sits at a given time. If it sits for too long, it triggers a notice or some type of event.
On a cycle like this, we have a term like, that we kind of use on the audit side is what could go wrong? Like, if, if we're, if you're getting out a tax bill, just start from, or, or, or anything like, say, what could possibly go wrong that would cause something like this to go out incorrectly? And then almost work backwards and say, okay, what kind of control can we put in place to ensure that what could go wrong doesn't go wrong?
Like running an audit.
Now you're all auditors. So during the audit, we had identified that the TIF capture for the DDA, the county development authority was calculated using improper taxable value, resulting in a proposed adjustment recorded by the township. Township ended up, township's DDA ended up recording receivable in, in a, at a revenue. You know, so again, this would be more along the, the lines of maybe a second set of eyes looking at, at, at something as far as a control to ensure when, when the captures, the captures of these incremental finance dollars are meeting expectations, that expectation could be, hey, reviewing last year's because we do that. I mean, part of our analysis is actually setting an expectation on where we're last year as it relates to base years and taxable value. And, and really, does it make sense from a capture standpoint? Did it meet our expectation? So that could be, you know, one, one item on top of, hey, a second set of items. It's, it's a complex calculation that the township uses. It's an Excel formula. All of us who work with Excel kind of know that it's kind of easy to fat finger. Something like, like that. And it's just to make sure that the calculations are correct.
And doesn't, does the tax, I mean, I guess it's a BSNA question. Sorry, I wasn't sure if there was a tax program.
Yeah, we, we use that, so I'm, I'm not one to, I will draw, even though it's not.
A second set of eyes.
Yeah.
Uh, that means someone who knows what the hell they're doing, right? Knows what they're looking for, right?
It's always ideal, correct.
Yeah, so, I'm subtle.
It's a great question. I mean, I, I kid, but it's, it is a good question.
So who does it now? Is, is it Sandy? Is it Donna? Is it, I don't know who does it now. Is it Sandy?
It's Donna.
Okay, so who would be a second set of?
No, no, it's not Donna.
No, it takes Donna, Donna can speak to this.
No, Sandy, Sandy is the one because she's the DDA.
Yeah, yeah, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not fingers. I'm saying, I'm looking for the second set of eyes.
Right.
Who would that be in the township board? Uh, or what, what should the policy be, you know?
It would, it would be, it would be someone that the township would feel comfortable. This would be a, a policy item. So, you, you know, it is important that someone other than Sandy understand how this works. It, you know, Sandy's on vacation. Sandy retires, you know, just like every other position, hopefully, in the township, kind of having that backup person that has an overall understanding should somebody be away for a period of time. It's important that, that they understand. I'm not suggesting this, but is it somebody like Rebecca? She's got a finance background that she could, I mean, I, I would feel comfortable. Again, not a recommendation, but it would be somebody with that skillset that we feel could understand if there's an error, you know, an unintentional error, they could make a suggestion. And I, I mean, it's no different than what we, I mean, Ashley does a, a bunch of work papers and I, I review them. It's, we don't, we have multiple levels of review to make sure our product is going out, you know, accurately. So to the extent that the township's able to do that, you know, ninety-nine times out of a hundred, it's gonna be right. Maybe it's even more, nine hundred and ninety-nine times out of a thousand. But in that one instance, that it's not, if it's significant enough, it could have an impact like it's having in the DDA. Because it's, it's a decent sized number for the DDA, which doesn't have a bunch, bunch of revenue, so.
With the size of our township and the revenue and expenditures and whatnot, how, how many people should we have on staff? It just seems like we have a few people doing a lot of things. And I don't know, it just seems also that we, if we, you keep, you keep talking about second set of eyes, but if we don't have them, or it's the same people, then it's overlapping.
Yeah, so the second set of eyes, I'll, I'll go back to my first comment. Everything I say here is a suggestion. The township's gonna have to weigh the, the pros and cons and just, they may say, you may say, you know what? Dave, that's a great suggestion. And we can meet every suggestion in here and we'll add twenty people to our staff. Well, I'm not sure that that's the right answer here. So it's really identifying, maybe taking a closer look at roles and responsibilities within the different departments, taking a look at the skillsets, what can overlap, what can be integrated. It's, you know, what's coming out of this, this audit, we're seeing this, you know, Ashley and I have seen this at other communities too, is taking a, a closer and closer look at departments, what they can do. Do they have capacity? Does somebody have too much work? Because that's, you know, that, that's, a lot of times these errors are not, and I would say in almost all instances, it's not a matter of people trying to do, you know, bad work. A lot of times is you've got some folks that just may have too much on their plate. They're trying to cover everything and it's like, you know, something's gonna give. They're doing their best, they're doing their hardest and, and, you know, they're looking out for the township and oops. And to kind of have that person there to be in their, you know, oh, yep, oops, thank you. Now, we've caught that potential error.
So you found five issues and I'm not saying we should obviously, you know, mitigate these, these challenges. But, you know, I think we're, as Carrie was headed, is like, how, how are we, how are we rating against everyone else? I mean, are we doing a, would you give us like an A, a B, a D? Given our size, given the scope of folks that we have? How, how are we doing?
I think, here, here's how I'd look at it compared to where you've been. Because I think Jessica might have mentioned earlier, we're seeing some of these for the first time. So you're seeing these for the first time. I think my question to you all is what are you gonna do with that? Because I'm not gonna sit here and say, ah, don't worry about it. Because they rose to a level that we needed to report that here. What I would look at and say is, is what in this overall listing would not require much of a change? Both resource-wise, meaning resource labor, resource money, to really implement? And, and try to get, and, and I look at a couple of these and I think it might, you know, it, it's probably not going to take much. But the ones where you're taking a look at for the first time, okay, this is what we're gonna do. We've identified these internal controls. We've now weighed the pros and cons and we're looking at the pros outweighing the cons. Now we're gonna do that through some sort of resource adjustment. Are we trying to bring, bring folks in?
I guess my question to you is, is, is a very important, succinct question is, you know, so we had five issues. I think we all agree we're all gonna address the ones. I mean, why, why, give us back the right question?
Right, right.
You know, I'm pretty sure responsibility is to make sure that money's accurate. But the question is, given some other townships our size, our growth, do they typically run them to four or five challenging controls? Are these typical growing pains that you see?
So I would say maybe, I would say maybe in the, some, I mean, some will have to. I would, I, you know, but I'd say maybe around three.
Yeah.
Well, it might be unusual. Usually one of them are gonna, one of them is gonna be exactly like the next one we're gonna cover. Is that, I mean, that's almost a given as it relates to journal entries. But what we're seeing that's different, I, I would say three of the first four items are somewhat unusual in nature. We don't, I, I would say three of these, I've never reported on before.
Okay.
So, you know, yeah, I mean, I mean, not only reported on at the township, like, I've been doing this for thirty-plus years. I've not run into a situation like this before.
Okay.
So, you know, there could be something that, you know, hey, maybe everything kind of happened at once and, you know, maybe there was this, I mean, there was change. There was, it sounds like there was significant changes in, in some responsibilities within the town. Things may happen when you're doing that, right?
Dave, which three are you talking about?
I, I, so ones that I've not seen before, one, three and four. I mean, one of three for sure, four, I might have run into. If, if it was, it might be one or, it may be once.
All right, so the big one, audit adjustments supporting schedules.
Yep. So audit adjustments supporting schedule. So this is required. So, you know, we don't expect to step in, we, we think it's unrealistic, although it'd be great to step into an audit and not propose any journal entries. I mean, you're, you're, you've got thousands and thousands of transactions that are running through plus trying to close the year end up correctly. There's, there's going to be adjustments that, that, that we come across that may need to be made. Here, what we run into is when, when they reach a certain level, we then are required to at least identify the areas that those related to. So we had in this instances, you know, adjustments to federal revenue, unearned revenue. And that was really just reporting of the ARPA monies as revenue versus unearned revenue. Counts payables, some receivables. And we talked a little bit about, not necessarily the cash missing, but essentially what, what fund it was reported in. The, the second part of this though, you know, we, when, when, when it was ready for audit, you know, there were certain schedules that had come in at different points that didn't necessarily end up reconciling to the general ledger. So we'd have to go back and forth on it. It's like, okay, you know, we've started testing, we go to try to tie it out. It's not tying out, so it's gotta go back and forth. And, and really some sort of process to ensure when the information is turned over for audit review, that a certain level of review is done to ensure that, you know, I guess at a minimum that, that the, the balance is reconciled to the general ledger. So we, we ran into that a number of times where we've got it, we ask questions, we got a new one, didn't, didn't work, you know, and kind of went back and forth. So it's, it's, you know, that, that could use some, some help. And that's, that was on audit schedules, I got it.
So multiple adjustments to accounting records in order for the financial statements to be in accordance. I mean, that seems like, that's a nice way of saying something's really wrong here, right?
Well, I'll give you, I'll give, I'll give you the, maybe.
Where's some examples?
So I'll give you the easiest example. Let Ashley find it out.
That's pretty rigorous wording, right?
Yeah, well, what it is, what, so we gave an unmodified opinion. We talked about that first. Unmodified opinion means that these statements as presented fairly reflect the, the financial position. They're reported according to GAAP and the GASB standards. What we're saying in this paragraph is, yes, but there were certain adjustments that if we hadn't caught, would have literally made these statements go out materially incorrect. Um, I think probably the easiest one is the, the ARPA monies.
Yeah, so the, the cash came in for ARPA. It was all sitting in cash. It's more just a financial statement GAAP reporting, as Dave mentioned. So came in, the cash is sitting in your cash account. The, the other side of the transaction was revenue where that money hadn't been earned yet. And so it should have been unearned revenue essentially for the ARPA dollars. And so that, that adjustment took out the, the revenue and posted it as an unearned revenue until that money's spent and earned. I think the, the accounts payable and expenses and then the receivables and cash. Those were, those are also journal entries that we identified as part of the audit. They reflected in the financial statements. But without those, that was, wouldn't be in accordance with GAAP and accrual basis accounting.
And so, sorry. Yeah, just to follow, because you are, I mean, I mean, thank you for everything, even for Sio really. But when you describe, you know, the adjustments that have to be made to our accounting records in order for us to produce financial statements in accordance with GAAP and current GASP's, are you saying that our accounting standard, our accounting records, that it appears that throughout the year, we're not keeping our accounting records in accordance with GAAP and current GASP's? Because that's been something we have trouble keeping up on.
So, so, so I will say, sometimes. So I'll, I'll use, so the, the, let me, let me use the, the rescue plan monies again first and then I'll move on to the other ones. So the rescue plan monies came in as cash and revenue. The standard supposedly says that needs to come in as unearned revenue. It's not recognized revenue until you've got a matching expenditure. It's just revenue recognition, it's pretty.
And I will say Rebecca and I did that entry. I remember.
So, well, I, I, I mean, so.
No, no, but to be clear.
So, so yes, that wasn't according to, to GAAP. But I would say with absolute certainty, you knew the money was there.
Yep.
You knew it could be spent. You didn't make a bad decision based on that being a revenue or expenditure. Because you knew you had the cash, the revenue. So yes, that adjustment needs to be made, you know. Would it be beneficial? And, and I don't know if this is, is happening or not, so I apologize if this is happening. Would it be beneficial to ensure those responsible for financial reporting are, are making sure they're keeping up to date on, on, on the reporting requirements of, of new grants, for instance? I'm gonna talk about a new GASP coming out. I mean, there, there, there's GASP's that are, you know, kind of out there all the time. And, and we, we provide work aids and we try, but we're not here every day, right? And, and we're always available for questions, but we're not here every day. So it's important, I think, you know, for those who are responsible ultimately for the closing of the books, that they've, they, they know they're well versed in enough, enough in the standards to, to make sure that they're reported accurately. And, and if they're not, and also well versed enough, if they're not sure, to reach out and ask for help. Because they can ask how, if, if they, if, if in your, I'm sorry. If, if whomever was, if Jessica were to reach out, hey, you know, I'm not sure about this and call, how are we supposed to report it? Call Ashley and ask you, and I said, well, hey, that's what you need to do. Boom, 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 you've got, we're a resource. It's when the audit starts that it's like, okay, that you kind of turned over and said this is how it was.
So this kind of you and I think to our team, you know, we've got, we're on the hunt for a finance director who would have kind of CPA practice. I wouldn't expect you to know that. I mean, as a general accountant.
No, I'm, I'm just, I'm just being real about what kind of capacity we have.
Yeah, yeah, no, I'm just saying, but if this thing was made, if you didn't make that journal incorrectly, I wouldn't blame you for it, I mean.
I'm, I'm not, this is not about me. It's about the organization and who's available to me.
Understood. So, so we do have a, a hunt for a finance director who would have some type of accounting, strong accounting background, CPA or not.
Yeah.
Likely anyways, that I would, my gut would be they would capture those types of inconsistencies and make sure that the monies were appropriate and correct. Because what I'm hearing is, it's not like we had money get misappropriated, you know? It just maybe got put in the wrong buckets, but there wasn't any missing money or missing funds or any kind of, it was all money business for lack of a better term.
Now, the other step though, like when we're dealing with payables and receivables, those are normally on the line of cutoff.
Yeah, it was a year end.
So it's like, you, you know, for the most part, you're running, you're reporting on a cash basis. I mean, there would be, but then you need to look out after year and say, okay, as of, at March thirty-first, boom. But you end up like in payables. You gotta kind of look out sixty days-ish, maybe even ninety, and say, hey, any invoices come in and May fifteenth that really related to work as of March thirty-first? May fifteenth that really related to work as of March thirty first? Okay, we've gotta take care of that. Again, not necessarily because you don't know, it's more of a process on the close of year end.
We've always done that in the past.
Yeah, I, I'm just trying to give examples.
But this year I think there was some, some question.
I had a couple of questions.
I'll let you guys decide.
Head it up in five minutes, but go ahead.
Okay, so I just, when I talked to Mr. Vaughn, he mentioned, I asked him a question about amending the budget after we've gone over.
Budget, yeah.
And I think at one point we had a board meeting where we were told this is routine, it's done all the time. Is that correct?
Yeah, we've always, you always have the ability before year end.
Hmm.
Okay, so.
Yeah, I, I don't, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not sure that the budget, I'm not sure that the budget act would say that. I think the budget act would say you've got the ability to budget up to the year end. Um, but the, um, but purchases of goods and services should be appropriated for prior to entering and into, into any sort of contract, right, contract or purchase agreement.
So what he said.
But Public Act two.
What he said to me was, that was not a good policy. That is not a good policy. But it's better than nothing. It's like the best of, of your worst options.
Well.
Those were his words.
Yeah, uh, uh, um, you know, where, where, um, where the difficulty be, so, you know, ideally, if you're, if, if you're following Public Act two as it relates to the budget, it really should be appropriated for prior. You know, I, I don't wanna get into, to, 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 to why budgets are not necessarily done bef, you know, at the end of the year. A lot of time budgets amendments are done close to the year, at least or in form, is, hey, we're going through that whole closing process. And while we haven't spent a dollar, we think we've committed to, to something and receive something that may not be paid out six, sixty days, so he's got it. In next year's budget, it's like, eh, the, the good service relates to this year. So under Public Act two, you really shouldn't have committed to that unless it was appropriated for. And I think that's, I don't wanna speak for Kiriam's, but I'm fairly certain that's what he's saying is. And, um, you know, as to, to why it's best, it's like, well, yeah, you can do that. So you avoid, I guess, in the reporting, because we, we report in this document, here you provide us what the original, um, original budget is and the final amended budget. Um, as part of the RSI schedule, um, one, um, it compares the, I'm sorry, the required supplemental information. Um, it will compare the final balance, I'm sorry, the, yes, the final balance to the amended, final amended budget. If that's in the deficit, we end up reporting it, you've got to answer for it. I, I'm assuming that's why he's, again, I hate to speak for him. I'm assuming that's why he's saying that, because if you were to go that route, you're gonna show that you're, that you're positive. Is that, is that really how the budget act was set up? Probably not. That's, that probably wasn't the intent of the budget act that was set up.
I have a question. I'm not a CPA, so can you tell me what you meant when you said as part of the audit, there were multiple follow-ups, not one, but multiple follow-ups and updates needed to reconcile certain schedules that did not reconcile to the general ledger. Does that mean we stalled here, or somebody didn't get what you wanted, or you're like, hey, what, what, what did you want?
Oh, no, but we were getting it, it was just not always correct, and had to go back for revisions and revisions and revisions.
What was incorrect?
I, I can give an example. So there's a schedule that, there's multiple schedules that we get, a lot of them are Excel different. So for an example, uh, an accounts receivable balance on the balance sheet is a hundred thousand dollars. Let's say this isn't exactly what happened, but like is a hundred thousand dollars. There's detail of who, like each resident or each person that that is due from, and it should total to a hundred thousand dollars at the bottom of the ten pages. We would get that schedule and it doesn't equal what's on the general ledger total, so we would follow back up. And we'd get it again, and it still doesn't equal, and we'd follow back up. At the end of the audit, after multiple follow-ups, it agreed, or we understood what the reconciling item was, but when it was turned over for audit, it wasn't, they didn't reconcile.
And there might be a.
Were you confident that it was right, or just that it was tweaked to make it match?
Well, no, at the end, we wouldn't move pa, so it's alright for it not to equal, much like a bank. Uh, how often does a bank statement equal a bank, your, your ledger? Almost never, right? We, we all do our checking accounts, for those of us who still write checks. It's making sure that the reconciling items are documented, they make sense, and we're able to test them. And, and that's really, really the, the key. It doesn't have to always equal, but when they don't, having a trail, not only for our purposes, but really for the township's purposes, as to, yes, while it doesn't equal, this is specifically why, and this is why it makes sense. If we're not getting that, we're just seeing it's a hundred versus eighty, we look at and say, hey, you're twenty grand off, what's the deal?
So do we need to have a different system or better systems, or accountability, or?
Yeah, well, I mean, so, so, so one, I think it's before the, the statements, I'm sorry, before the schedules come back, um, whoever, whoever's one, res, responsible for that is, is ensuring that that reconciliation makes sense with documentation. And then, you know, you wanna make sure, somebody asked it, or I think, I think you had mentioned it earlier, as it related to reviews, um, second reviews or second set of eyes, is making sure the person who has been delegated that responsibility for whatever schedule's for is the right person, they understand it. Like, don't give a non-financial person a financial schedule and expect it to work, because they're not gonna understand. They're putting together what you think, but, but they don't understand it. So, so ultimately, before the schedules come back, it really should be reviewed and kind of signed off by someone with a financial sort of back, or somebody, I wanna be careful on financial, it's not, not a hundred percent of what we get is financial, but somebody who understands what it should be, has taken a look at it, and agrees to what, okay, yep, this makes sense, this is why, here you go.
And so, sorry, may I just ask one follow-up? Sure. Um, so, so with all the, because I know that this was well after we turned over the accounting records, which was already late, turned them over in August. Um, we had additional, you know, the second trial balance and different things and iterations. But in terms of the actual, um, adjustments that you had to make, because the schedules didn't reconc, didn't mesh with the general ledger, would that have been prevented? Do you think if we had better kept up our journals during the year? Like, when you talk about that, you know, one example there, when we're trying to fill out your schedules, I know that those are meant to be kind of tools that we could be using throughout the year. If we had a kind of regular month-end close process, we were keeping our journals and the general ledger properly reconciled throughout the year, would you expect that we would have avoided a lot of those?
Um, yeah, I mean, we'd have to go individually back through the journal entries, it's maybe some of them, but in, in, in some instances, it, it ended up not requiring an adjustment, for instance, because there was a good valid reason why the schedule didn't equal the ledger amount, it just wasn't documented.
Or documented.
So we weren't getting the information as to why, and we take a look, and, you know, this, you've told us this really doesn't make sense, so, you know, in certain areas that are significant, we, we dig in. I mean, we just don't look for something and say, okay, we got what we needed to move, we're, we're moving on. Um, so I guess it's, again, I go back to, it's important to make sure the right person i- is putting those together. Are there instances, um, you know, where if it's not being closed timely, that that would help? Absolutely. I mean.
Like what kind of instance?
Well, it just, you know, I, so I would look at, um, uh, the ARPA monies probably, you know, if somebody's taking a look at the ARPA monies, those are, they're coming through. Is there instances where we've got negative cash recorded? Does that make sense? It's, you know, it's those type of things where the system itself is operating, but if, if someone's kind of looking at it and enclosing it either monthly or quarterly, kind of the statements and takes a step back, you know, it's like, oh geez, you know, this really doesn't make sense when I look, this isn't what we expect, or, you know, are, it, we're, we're uh, five twelfths into the year, I would expect, um, probably, you know, five twelfths of this budget expen, of payroll for this department, and I'm at ninety-five percent. Is, is, you know, so those type, type of analysis are gonna help fall out, you know, is somebody looking? So, so I, to be honest, I don't know how often you're getting reports, but does the accounts payable listing, when, when that's provided, does the payables listing agree to subsidiary ledger? You know, that, that's the type of, you know, kind of stuff that, you know, you, you'd need to determine how often that would be to be done. Um, is that gonna help it? Certainly isn't gonna hurt.
And the la- last question on this item is, is you mentioned adjustment to cash for everybody's benefit, can you explain what you mean by cash?
This is, so this is just between funds, so the prep, there's a, the general fund i- in other village funds, but there's also a tax collection fund, so when tax sellers come in, whether it's the townships or other taxing authorities, that's the cat, the physical cash account that it goes in to the bank and then the general ledger. And then the township, that fund either transfers the money to the general fund or the appropriate fund, or cuts a check to the local taxing units. Wh- what happens at year end is the cash has been collected from the taxpayer, it's sitting in the cash in the tax collection fund. But the general fund has a receivable, like that taxpayer hasn't paid. That taxpayer has paid, it's just sitting in a different township account, and so that receivable that's recorded by the general fund at year end isn't valid, it's not a receivable, it's cash. The cash just hasn't came to the general fund, because it's sitting on the tax collection fund, so.
And so that adjustment is made by suggesting that we move that, or?
Yes. Right, so, well, it, it's really almost a journal entry. So yes, you can, you can move it, i- i- if you'd like. You know, and I go back to, you know, without throwing out the GASP's, but I will. I think it was GASP fifty-four that really changed the reporting of that. So pre-GASP fifty-four, what was being done there was, was, that's how it was done, you know, that was the accounting. Fifty-four kind of changed it and said, hey, you know, if you've got township money sitting in that fiduciary account, it's not really a fiduciary, you can't be a fiduciary for yourself.
Right.
So for financial reporting repurposes, whether you moved it out of that fund or not, you've gotta treat it as if you moved it into the, that tax collection.
Right.
So, so not a big, so there wasn't cash missing, it was just a, really a matter of making sure that the cash itself was being reported in the right fund according to the standards.
Absolutely, makes sense.
Okay, um. Well, I, I may have more reports to do.
That was page three.
Oh, more, okay, wow.
Um, ho- hopefully the rest of the, page four, um, section two required communication to those churches of governance, so prior to the, the start of the audit, um, we had sent a, a communication out talking about, you know, the, the timing and scope and, and, um, what we deemed to be the risk errors and how we were going to dis, to, to address those and incorporate it tailored into our audit approach. This letter here is really to communicate, um, other than the internal control items that we had found, that we had mentioned earlier, some other night, items that really need to warrant your attention. So, um, some particular items on page four in the middle, um, we've, um, got some items where we've have instances of non-compliance with public acts. Um, each of these are recurring from last year. Um, it's a little different on how this is reported to, um, to treasury, so I know we reported there was non-compliance. I don't know what the, the response that came back from them was, as far as if they listed these out specifically.
Comprehensive.
Okay, so, so, so I guess. Good, I mean, I, I, we're, we're not sure how that, how that plays out, but it, it's in here. The three items again recurring, so Public Act two of, I'm sorry, Public Act two, two, two seventeen. Um, really, you know, I think for the most part, we focus on it, and most local units focus on it uh, as it relates to the funding levels of your legacy costs. So if you were less than sixty percent funded on a pension, you were deemed to be underfunded. If it was forty percent, you, you're underfunded, but that's not necessarily the compliance part of it. What it said was, um, if you allowed new employees to enter your OPEP plan or your, your retiree healthcare plan, we're not saying you can't do it. But if you do do it, you must set up a trust and fund the normal cost for just the new, not for all employees, for new employees that were hap, hired after June thirty, two thousand and eighteen. So you have, the township has employees that were hired after June thirty, two thousand and eighteen, that are part of the plan, and the township has not set up a trust yet to fund those costs. So that's the non-compliance.
And Mark's working on that.
Yeah, that's Mark's fault, even though you started it.
No, 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 but I'm saying, we, we do have a, we, we're partway there with our firefighters and have a plan to take care of it for the rest.
How many new employees have we had since two thousand and eighteen?
I don't know, we'd have to, they don't know. I don't know, I'm ballparking.
And it's firefighters, or? I can't think of who's taking care of.
So when we onboard an employee, that's not part of the process? Like, you know, ID, password, email, OPEP contribution, with Odin, I mean, that's, that's, that's something we need to do, right?
We've made a checklist, I made a checklist for employee onboarding, and we try to follow it, and that's as far as we've gotten, John.
Okay, no, I'm, I'm, listen, I'm, I'm.
No, no, it's not about critical, it's just about reality. This is not the city of Ann Arbor.
It is a valid point that he's making.
No, no, no.
Yeah, but so is hers.
And, and I'm not, no, I'm not being defensive, I'm just saying, you know.
No, I'm not criticizing, I'm not criticizing anyone.
You, you can't, you can't have Mark do everything, you can't have anybody do everything, we just gotta right-size it to make it, you know, feasible, so.
Why don't we move on with the report?
Uh, the next item, uh, Public Act one ninety-six, nineteen ninety-seven does require a local unit to provide an estimate, an investment report to the governing body on a quarterly basis. So that needs to happen quarterly. Um, when it doesn't, in all four quarters, we, we need to report.
So how many times have we gotten this investment report from them? Last, during this time period, how many did you?
I can't answer that. I don't know, because it was, as we all know, it was a year of turmoil. So normally, I, like you said, every quarter. Until COVID was a big factor, when we were working from here and there, and it's just getting, it's going back into the routine, so.
And now you have a deputy treasurer.
She doesn't do that, but she can take care of the other stuff.
She, is she going to be doing the investment reports?
No, yeah, that's mine, that's mine.
So I do have a question about, is there a certain, is there a format that that has to be? Is it, can it be like a bank statement, here's, our money's here, here's what it is, or?
Not quite. Donna has a format.
No, I'm asking these, if there's a, an expected format or statutory format in, add that one in there.
I think the statutory format, the required statute, and to be honest, I'm not sure Donna, what you, what you're putting together, but like, I, I believe if you looked at the statute literally, you could provide a list of your bank accounts.
That's right.
And its balances, like literally at the end, and the, I think the investment income for the quarter.
And the interest rate, yeah.
I believe that complies. Some will be more elaborate than that, and maybe have a whole write-up story, but I think, I believe the bare minimum is almost just a listing, I think it's a listing of your accounts, but I think it's gotta be by institution. I think it might need to be by institution or something like that.
Can we, why don't we move on to the third bullet?
The third one is the Property Tax Act, so, um, two oh six of eighteen ninety-three does require, there's a specific um, time period when taxes are collected that they need to be remitted, um, to um, the other taxing units, so there was instances, um, where it fell outside of that fifteen days. Um, they didn't, they get, they did get there, but, uh, you, you then had to report on that non-compliance issue.
Dave?
Yes.
I just wanted to note, just so the board isn't surprised, there's this piece, and then there's the auditing procedures report, which you all filled out and sent to the state upon which the corrective action plan request is based. In the auditing procedures report, it also notes, you also noted that we weren't in, which we knew, weren't in compliance with PA two, um, as it budgeted as a deficit in the fire department fund. And so I'm, I'm working on the, the draft responses of, of some of these. Um, there's two areas in the back of the, you all probably know, page fifty-seven of our financial statement. page fifty-seven of our financial statements shows a couple areas, open space fund and general fund, where we incurred expenditures that were in excess of the amounts budgeted. And then the second one is when we, um, have the fund balance of negative five hundred thousand in fire. Those are all, those are the three instances I'm responding to.
So these are the three instances. Now, if you look at that report, if you've got it in front of you, which I don't.
Yeah, I do.
Um, I believe there's a question that asks, under statutory compliance, whether or not you got budget overruns, so many words. Right, I mean, I think the next question is, do you have anything that's over ten percent?
Yeah.
Of the, I don't remember. So you, it's not just, I don't, I think as treasury looks at it, it's just, you know, we watch, we wanna know if it's a dollar over. I mean, literally, we've got instances when they started enforcing that where if you were ten dollars over, so that's not material. We, we as a firm got notes from disclosures from treasury saying if it's one dollar order over, you will report it on this, on this item. So we've corrected that. What they do with that ten percent, to be honest, Jessica, I don't know. But they're asking that question for a reason and maybe they're not following up as hard if it's, if they deem to be it not as a significant.
Definitely, and that's, and that's fine. There's just a, a note here and I think, I think it maybe was a description you all, um, filled out. It was in the area before that. Does the audit report identify violations of other statutes not described above? Yes, described below, PA two oh two, PA one ninety-six, and then PA two as it budgeted as a deficit in the fire department fund. Those are your words, right?
Uh, yeah, that's our words.
Yeah, so on page fifty-one, you can see the fire department fund amended budget ending deficit. So that's where, as a result of that showing negative in the auditing procedures report that triggered that response, or request of a response from the state.
Perfect.
Right, so, so once you budget into a deficit, now what my change is, I suspect as part of that communication, treasury's asked for a deficit elimination plan.
They actually, you know, they actually don't.
Because I think we've had discussions on that because of the way the receivable.
I didn't think they would, yeah.
So I think as long as that, my recollection is as long as the budget going forward does not, does not show an increase in that deficit.
Well, we're, we're, we have a plan for February fourteenth, hopefully-ish, is, is the working plan to, um, take action as a board to forgive that loan from the general fund to the fire fund. So, um, I plan to include that in the draft responses. Oh, yeah, we're dealing with that.
You know, of course, I mean, I think, I know we've talked about this as part of the audit and what really was it a deficit or wasn't because you had the cash? And, you know, it's a focus on working capital and, and that's what I think, without committing, I think, really, you and I had, I know what the statute says, I know we've got it reported. I can't make any guarantees, but they may not consider this a deficit. And it sounds like that's where they landed.
Yeah, they did.
But I couldn't definitively give that, I couldn't, I couldn't say that. Um, thank you. On page five, um, we do have a highlight on where difficulties encountered performing the audit. Um, you know, we've talked a lot about, you know, kind of what, what put that in here, but I mean, you know, we're sitting here in January, your, 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 um, your, your, Public Act two of sixty-eight required you to have the audit done really and submit to treasury by September thirtieth. So, so obviously, and, and even when it was turned over, we were still working and requesting documents in December. So, um, I'm sure not expected by, by this, but I think we've covered most of the reasons. But the fact that it really, you know, probably, you know, I think we're all hoping something's a little bit better next year and we're not sitting here in January to, to cover the, the, the audit results for twenty twenty-three.
When should we start to begin this process?
Yes. I mean, I, we try to, it's easy for us to say because we come in audit, but, you know, the, the process for an audit is actually year-round. I mean, if, if you're, if, if, if the township is able to keep up on its, on its accounting and the policies and the procedures are there, yes, there's still a bit, a little bit of a lift. So I don't wanna, you know, the, the work that the finance department, you know, so there's a lot of stuff here related to the, there's a lot of stuff that the finance department did really well. So you, I mean, you've got good staff, you've, you've, you, you do. Um, but there's a, you know, there's a lot that they're responsible. They've gotta come in and do all the closing entries, which is a little bit different than what they're doing on a normal, on a normal basis. You know, ideally, you'd say, hey, we're starting to think about it, you know, maybe the audit, we'd love to hear, we're gonna talk to you, we're gonna talk to you before the year end. But boy, it'd be nice to hear of, you know, you started putting even the schedules like, hey, we know that, that the auditors are gonna ask for fixed asset additions. Do you know what they, the eleven months are for the first eleven? Do we start putting those schedules together? So you, you're not stuck in June with, you know, an overload of work of trying to close everything out. So, you know, some, some folks, some, some local units will run their audit schedules throughout the year. Every time I've got a fixed asset addition, it's going on the fixed asset schedule for audit. I would say at a, at a minimum, probably, you know, start thinking about some of the stuff, maybe thirty days before your year-end and certainly well into it in the thirty days after year-end and when you're starting to close, you know, the, the bank statement and getting that reconciled because that, that will have a significant impact on, on that reconciliation of those expenditures.
But, but I think to manage expectations of the board, because a lot of times, I think here, we've called audit prep, quote unquote, to be catching up on the books, okay? Instead of being on top of our journals and the general ledger throughout the year and having a month-end close process. So this is part of, of the future agenda item about bringing in some immediate finance help um, to help, help us because we, um, our, our books are in no better shape right now, you know, than they, than they were last year. I can assure you of that.
Why don't we move on with the report?
So the last section, and I'll, I'll try to be brief, although I know I haven't, so I apologize for that. But section three is our legislative information. Ashley and I feel this is a lot of good, good information that, you know, can, can be helpful and can really be a resource. But there's two particular items I just wanna spend a minute on or two. Um, we've talked, you know, in a couple, a couple different instances about the, the rescue plan monies and the ARPA monies that are unearned and they're, they will be spent, right? I mean, you're, you've probably gotten, like, you should probably gotten the second payment and you, you've got the money. Um, with those money came compliance requirements. Um, so not knowing what you're going to spend it on, if it is procurement-related at all, if you're purchasing an asset or services and it's not, for instance, like payroll, you need to make sure and read, um, the, 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 um, the ugly, um, it's a uniform guidance. Standards to ensure that your procurement policy is, when you're, when you're spending these months is consistent with uniform guidance. Because what we've seen on some that have already started to spend it, well, we've got a, um, we've got a policy. Yeah, well, it's not quite as strict as the uniform guidance. And when they went through that, they ran into some issues. So, you know, just, just be aware when you start to spend of all the compliance requirements of spending those, those monies. Um, you're under ten million, so there's an easy way to spend it too. We'd be happy at some point to, to talk to you about that. The other one is on page ten, the implement, the implementation of Gatsby eighty-seven. Um, this is a pretty big deal. Um, and I say that because Ashley and I have already lived through this for our junior ends and now our December year-ends. Um, we've sent, well, I think we've sent the word aids, we sent the word aids out? Maybe not, but we'll, we'll send out. Um, but really the township need, under this standard, and we've got webinars and that, that, that's available at no cost that you can want, that, that really talks about eighty-seven. But, um, it requires you, the township to identify, um, maybe, maybe leases. And it's important to look at this, at this webinar because a lease isn't defined by the agreement has the name, the word lease in there. It's the type of payments and, um, so the township will need to do some homework and go through and, and try to identify, um, agreements that they have with recurring payments of over twelve months, including any extensions that might qualify as what we call a right-to-use asset. Um, you know, could be a building lease, you may have a capital lease that you've treated operationally. Um, and what we're, not only it's, it's, it's assets that you're using, but it's also assets you may be leasing. What we're seeing a lot of is, and I'll ask this question, does, does the township have any cell towers? And do you have, are you giving monthly payments for that?
Yep.
Well, you have a lease receivable, pull that contract, I can, so there's one right there. I mean, so it's, it, so you've got an agreement, it might not say lease, it might say lease, but it, it's those type of things. And, and historically, um, when there's been implementations of new standards, I'll say, we've really been able to kind of sit next to, you know, township cities at times to kind of walk you through it. This one, we can help you through the accounting, but we've got no way of identifying what agreements you may or may not have out there. So you'll wanna start a process, you know, what do you know, what do your departments know? And really start that, that information gather.
The webinar sort of helps.
It, it'll give you a basic understanding. We have, so I've worked, I'd say, if, if, if somebody spends some time in the webinar, Ashley and I are always a resource as well. And the work aid, I mean, not to pat ourselves on the back, is pretty darn solid. And it'll kind of help you go, go through and i- identify what might qualify. And when you, what I would say is when you get to that point where you think you've identified everything, you'll wanna talk to us because the standard, like all standards, says keep materiality in mind. So if you're, you know, if you've got a lease for your copier at twenty-five bucks a month, which I know is not it, it's gonna be, thanks for identifying, it's gonna be scoped out because of materiality. So we, we can help on it. It's more, the, the heavy lifts is identifying these relationships.
Good.
Woo, I hope so, I almost lost my voice.
I have a question, um. Uh, Mark Thompson, any questions or you get to talk to him offline about it? This is something you're walking into, Mark, are there any questions that you have of these guys? Or you have the ability to meet with them ahead of time offline?
Well, I, I have met with them once already and we talk more generally than, than this, uh, these items. I certainly have the ability to do that and, and suspect that, uh, that might be more productive than.
Yeah, right, and community help from the board would expect policies, uh, it'll let us know.
Absolutely, yes.
All right, thanks.
There aren't any other, oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you, um, we've received a, a letter from the state. It was the Department of Treasury asking for corrective action plan. Um, and I, I'm assuming that's being worked on?
Yes.
Okay, well, a plan is a plan unless we take action. So how are we going to implement, make sure that, and this isn't for, the question for you, but for us as a board to make sure, um, maybe we should have a work session because I think we have a lot to go over, um, and, you know, that's some.
That's a good idea.
Well, except that time is quite limited.
No, no, I mean, once we have a corrective action plan, I mean, that's something Donna and I are working on, putting our heads together on Friday.
Oh, I see.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Because it's due.
It's due at the end of this month, so I don't, we're not gonna jam a, a special work session before then, but, but afterwards, yeah.
Thank you, John. Yeah, yeah. No, but, but in terms of implementing the plan.
Implementing, right. Um, also, um, does Plant Moran, um, provide service that, um, for a deep review of our inter, internal controls? Or is that something that you could recommend or another outside source to recommend? Something deeper than this, um, because it sounds like we have some issues.
Yeah, I, I mean, um, so, so we assess the controls to the extent we need for financial reporting. The issue with us doing a deeper dive is it's ultimately gonna end up in recommendations that would change to your control system. Um, so, um, you know, is there other opportunities? Like, uh, on, on that one in particular, is, is, I remember the Michigan Township Association.
Mm-hmm.
Has, has the township reached out at all to see what kind of resources they may have? I, I don't, I mean, if you've done that, I mean.
I mean, I have, I've shared, I've shared different educational, you know, resources. We also have the physically ready communities, I mean.
Well, I'm just wondering if they've actually got, because in some instances, they, you know, they'll come out and meet with you.
Yeah.
I, I don't know if this is one of them, um, you know. So, yeah, I, could we take a, I think we'd, you know, we've identified what we've put and made the suggestions we can. For us to come in and re-hall the internal, the whole system and say, okay, if I, if this was me and this is my township, this is how I'd set it up and do, 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 do. At that point, we've essentially set up the control s- system, so we're, we're not independent anymore.
Who would do that?
Uh, I mean, so another firm.
So our, our firm does that, but our, but we, yeah, or we, yeah, so we have people in our firm that do that, but we can't do that on clients that we perform the audits on to be independent.
Actually, we have an agenda item later on, on this agenda that may be relevant to that question.
It's a, yeah, I think, perhaps.
Okay, well, let's talk about it when we get there, I guess.
Well, I, I, I'm mindful that this report has been going on for quite a while and, uh, not, that's no criticism. We appreciate all of the dialogue and answering of questions. Uh, but we do have other items on the agenda and people waiting, and so I do wanna keep us moving along.
Well, this was important.
Yeah, no, no, I, that's what I was just saying, this is absolutely important, important, vital information. We've been looking forward to this presentation and appreciate very much all of the work from Plant Moran on the audit and this evening answering questions and talking with us.
Thank you, folks.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you both.
That brings us to our next report, which is, uh, the fire chief, fourth quarter report. Your end, fourth quarter, your end report.
I would like it. Uh, do I have the ability to share screens? Thanks.
Oh, that's my guy.
My guy.
Click through. All right, thank you.
Sure. Yeah, do you like the chairs?
I don't know.
Okay.
I didn't need paint.
I didn't either.
Okay, thank you, board. Um, I had two months I had not reported on, um, or changed their formats. And I'm gonna give you those last two months as well as a brief, uh, fourth quarter year-end type report. Uh, November, December, one hundred and twenty-two incidents, in November, one hundred and fifty in December. Uh, total for the year, fourteen hundred and fifty-one calls. I've got a breakdown of our calls on this chart, uh, on our report here. Interestingly, November had our highest number of, uh, I guess I call offensive fires at fourteen for the month, and December had our highest number of calls overall for the year. Uh, some comparison data, this compares, uh, twenty, twenty-two to twenty-twenty-one. Uh, overall, a big picture, up nine point five percent calls year-over-year. Usually the responses, uh, we assisted our neighbors forty-four times, requested assistance forty-two times. Uh, our people we helped the most, the city of Ann Arbor, uh, we received most of our assistance from Dexter. Uh, rundown of significant incidences, incidents, uh, for the last two months. November, uh, we got a call at the ANW on Dexter Chelsea Road, reported grease fire. Uh, minor fires contained to a fryer, extinguished quickly. Uh, November eleventh, building fire report, uh, on Hawthorne, occupants off flames in a closet that housed their water heater. There will use a fire extinguisher, dry chemical extinguisher to extinguish it. We arrived, confirmed the fire was out, uh, and assisted in removing smoke from the home. We arrived, confirmed the fire was out, uh, and assisted in removing smoke from the home. November 11th, the same day we assisted Chelsea on a, uh, fire on an outbuilding and some stuff outside the building on Kavanaugh Lake Road, our personnel were probably in our system there. On November 24th, uh, building fire at Juniper Drive, I keep reported an electrical, out was smoking within their wall. Again, they had a fire extinguisher handy, was able to extinguish the fire. We ensured the fire was out and again helped, uh, get all the smoke and everything out of the building. Uh, 26th of November, uh, outside fire on Parker Road, uh, crews arrived to report of a brush fire outside. They found about, uh, report indicates about 10 acres of, uh, wetland-type area burning. Uh, took us about 90 minutes to extinguish that fire with the assistance of Dexter, Chelsea, and Manchester Fire Departments. Uh, and it does appear that it was started by a neighbor who was burning something in his yard. Uh, November 29th, building fire at Juniper Drive, uh, neighbor, uh, looked outside, saw smoke and flames coming from a home. Uh, she identified it as the kitchen of the home, uh, the neighbor had recently left for work. Uh, we arrived and found, uh, a, a pretty much similar situation, uh, kitchen fire that had extended into the attic. Uh, we were able to extinguish that fire pretty quickly. This one was kind of unique. Uh, they had a plastic water pipe inside the wall, and as the wall burned, uh, the pipe ruptured, which helped contain the fire, uh, limit damage. Uh, you know, again, there's still significant damage, but it's basically a sprinkler head, uh, unintentionally. Uh, this was, uh, determined, uh, to be a malfunctioning toaster. Uh, the resident had, uh, put some toast in his toaster, uh, failed to, uh, pop up when it was done. He left, forgot about it, and then we found, uh, that was the cause of the fire.
Andy?
Yes.
Is that another plus for PEX plumbing?
I, I, I would say so. The sprinklers are probably the best option, but yeah. We've actually had a couple of fires where, uh, something like this has happened and helped limit damage. Uh, December 4th, responded to the train tracks near Wagner for a vehicle struck by the train. Uh, we did find, uh, one victim on that scene with fatal injuries. December 12th, uh, High Hollow Drive, uh, received a call for a person, uh, who was, uh, doing some outside work and a tree had fallen on them. Um, fortunately, we got there, uh, was, uh, just trapped by the leg with not significant injuries. We removed the person, the tree, got the person to be evaluated by the paramedics. I think you've all heard of this, December 15th, assisting with traffic control 994. Um, scene of a rollover semi in Ann Arbor City, uh, Assistant Chief Armstrong, his vehicle was struck by a tractor trailer. Uh, he actually had to be, uh, extricated from the vehicle as the door wouldn't open, uh, very minor. Uh, we did have him evaluated, Chelsea ER, uh, he was off for a day or so with some soreness. And on December 16th, responded, uh, South Church, west of Zeeb for motor vehicle accident with a trapped driver. Uh, we did use our extrication tools, uh, to remove a driver who sustained serious injuries and, uh, got her turned over to paramedics. Response time data, uh, average response time, just, uh, 10 minutes 43 seconds, about two and a half to process our calls. And from when we get notified of an emergency to arrive is, uh, average, eight minutes 13 seconds. Gives us about a 40% response time, uh, or your response time goal of six minutes or less.
Chief, I, I, why does it take 2:30 for a 911 call to get to you? Like, if my house is burning and I call 911, say my house is burning, does it go to Metro or Central and then go to you two minutes later?
That call, I will say, is fast-tracked. Um, the calls that are often longer, uh, are less severe calls.
Like a 911 from a cell or, or, or?
Any call, any call, any 911 call comes in, goes to Metro Dispatch right next door. Uh, their first response is, hey, fire, police, or medical emergency. Uh, if they say it's, uh, hey, my house is on fire, all right, I'm going to get you to HVA. They, they got a couple of things, they got to verify the caller's, uh, phone number and a name, just in case they get disconnected. They immediately bump them over to HVA, HVA gets on the line and say, hey, this is Metro, we've got a house fire, here's your caller, here's the address. They begin their questions, they get that one kicked out quick. I think these other ones that are bringing their times up are some of our minor stuff. Hey, uh, yeah, my, uh, my uncle fell. Okay, um, is he hurt? I'm not sure, he feels like he's a little sore, all right, and they got a bunch of questions, they run down. That one, they could take a bit longer on.
And then where does that call go into?
Uh, they all start, uh, from Metro to HVA.
Okay, so they go, they go to Metro, Metro Dispatch?
Yep.
Used to be on the second floor, downtown in our, now where are they?
Next door.
Right next door.
Okay.
In the basement, next door. That call's then routed from the basement of next door to HVA's dispatch center, uh, Pittsville Township.
When you say next door, in the, I mean, oh, okay.
Oh, this building right here.
I was just going to say, can't they just knock on the door and say, hey, get over there? Is that the?
They're watching.
10 cans with a string.
Slightly more sophisticated, but yes. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, please, thank you.
Yep, okay. Uh, response comparison, 2020, 931 calls, we're actually down from 2019, that was primarily due to COVID. Uh, 2021, 1319, 1451 this year. So consistent increase in calls, and if we do remember, uh, mid-last year, we changed some of the call types to go on, so we did expect a little bit of an increase. So I'd expect less than 9% next year, although, uh, don't hope to. Training hours last year, uh, 1,413 hours of training. Uh, we're getting a lot better at recording our training, getting more consistent training, but we still definitely need to improve the quality. Uh, response per zones, uh, zone one, that's our north and northeast sections of the township, 265. Uh, zone two, the southeast section, 607, our busiest area. And the west and southwest, uh, 558, and here's, uh, kind of what we use for the breakdown. Is it an heat map? Uh, every time I get in front of you, I always tell you this, uh, where we have most population, we have the most calls. And it's kind of worn out by, uh, by the incident.
But what's up with Monday at lunchtime?
It's a good question. Some interesting statistical data you're going to see next, um. Uh, this gives a breakdown of every hour of the day, every day of the week, uh, when we have the most calls. And, yeah, uh, Monday between, uh, one and two, it looks like we're our busiest. Uh, as you would expect, uh, the more people are awake, the more we're busy. So our, our calls, uh, generally between, I will say midnight and 5:00 to 6:00 AM or, or less, or 4:00 AM or less. But, uh, as people get up, more people are active in the community, and, uh, more businesses are running and more folks in there working, we're busier. Makes good sense. Just interesting data points there. And then, uh, responses by unit 2022, our engine is our busiest, uh, vehicle, took, uh, 1,091 calls, rescue 550. Our tanker, 28 calls, uh, and our brush truck, only 10, uh, you know. We talked about last year, uh, a meeting on the 17th, how that vehicle's still in great shape. It's, uh, uh, our tanker gets a lot less use than our engine or our rescue, and it's in good shape as well. Also in that packet, I included for you a, uh, statistical breakdown of all the calls, not something I'm going to go over. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have, or if you want to talk about, uh, incident call types, I'm available.
If there are any further questions?
Thank you very much, chief.
Very good, thank you. Next thing. Is reports from everybody else, um, but we didn't have written reports submitted, so.
I did one after.
Yes, you did, I'm sorry, you did.
I, I would have done it last week, but I, the meeting wasn't, didn't get over till 10:30 last night.
You don't have predictive, predictive power.
Yeah. So I waited till that meeting was over.
So why don't we move on, uh, since I know we do have a public hearing, and we have people who have been patiently waiting for an opportunity to speak, um, to the board. And so we begin with a presentation, um, at the, that's, um, who, who else is participating, is it?
Jennifer, I.
Okay.
14 here.
Yes, right.
Okay.
So, uh, just a, a brief introduction for this public hearing, uh, well, well, this is a public hearing on, uh, 300 North Zeeb Road, parcel H 0822200005, Commercial Rehabilitation District. And, um, this is a part of a process. Public hearing is the first step in that process. Um, we did have a working session where we learned about this in general, uh, this is a little bit more, uh, background. And then, uh, we'll have an opportunity after the presentation for members of the public, um, who would like to, um, address the board, and then we'll have some time for board discussion. So with that, um, Mark, Jennifer.
She's, uh, just kind of sharing screen here. Some of this will be a little bit, uh, of a review from the, the work session for those in the public that weren't there. Uh, and we've skinned this down to mostly focus on the establishment of a district. So a little background on us, uh, thank you for allowing us to present this evening, we're MIHQ. Um, next slide. MIHQ is a Michigan, MIHQ or Michigan Innovation Headquarters is community-based collaborative coworking business incubator and accelerator. Founded in 2000, we have grown substantially while helping early-stage life science and technology companies grow and prosper. Our mission is to help proethical companies that will put down roots in our community and make a meaningful impact in our region and around the world. Today, we've helped dozens of companies get established through direct and indirect support. Our main campus is a repurposed contaminated industrial site. Uh, MIHQ along with 242 have created a thriving community where exciting ideas gel into viable products. Next slide. Um, why are we here? We're here to ask for the establishment of a commercial rehabilitation district. This is the first of many steps in creating a public-private partnership to enable the redevelopment of a long vacant environmentally contaminated blighted site at, at 300 North Zeeb. The PA 210 Commercial Rehabilitation Act tool was created to incentivize the redevelopment of long vacant contaminated and obsolete sites like this one. Establishing a district does not trigger a tax abatement in any way, uh, or in any way guarantee a tax abatement will be awarded. It simply starts the multi-step process that includes township, county, and state approvals. If eventually approved, the tax abatement would cap the taxes at current levels for a period of 10 to 20 years. The abatement would only be, uh, the abatement would only be on the increased taxes generated through the planned 10 to 15 million dollar investment and resulting property value increase. Township will continue to collect at least the same amount of taxes it currently collects. Establishment of the district supports the renovation and reactivation of this site at a level similar to its previous use, which I believe is preferred over previously proposed high-density mixed-use proposals. Businesses will be high-tech and the jobs will be high-quality and, and high-paying jobs. Next slide. Uh, our goal is to reinvigorate this site, which has been vacant for 13-ish years. It has become a blight, or blighted, uh, site on the front door of our township. It's not a good representation of the incredible business and technology we have in our township. Next slide. Our restoration plans, uh, with our, with our planned investment, we are remediating and/or cap the existing environmental contamination, asbestos, VOCs, and area, uh, and area of heavy metals. We will completely renovate the interior, give the exterior facelift, repave, and hopefully reduce the impervious surface of the parking lot. We will re-landscape and beautify the site, including working with the neighbors to the north and to the east to create a berm and vegetation screen to minimize visibility and lights from our site, uh, site, uh, for our neighbors. We also look to improve water runoff, water quality, uh, through bioswales and filtration. We'll incorporate the use of waste energy harvesting and geothermal in our building systems to minimize our impact on the environment. Through the use of the PA 210 tool and tax abatement, the extraordinary costs, extraordinary costs related to the remediation revitalization, revitalization of the site are made more financially palatable. Therefore, we ask for your support to create the Commercial Rehabilitation District for 300 North Zeeb. And, uh, we've added a similar slide here because I heard Jessica say before the meeting, she wanted to talk about next steps. So, uh, Jennifer, you want to run through them?
Well, originally, we had combined a couple of things into, one means what you can do, but, um, based on feedback from staff, we split it up. So today is just the hearing, we're presenting it, obviously, we'll open it up to the public for the hearing. And then at your next meeting on the 14th is when you would vote to establish a district. Of course, um, or, or not, so, I mean, I keep telling Mark, if you could vote today, we'd like that, but, um, we appreciate if you want to wait another meeting. Um, and then after, um, that vote takes place, then there, if the district is established, there would be, uh, the next day, you'd publish a public hearing to decide if you, um, on a tax abatement exemption. And then, um, you have to give the 30 days notice for that. And then on March 28th, you'd have a meeting to discuss that the abatement exemption. And then on, uh, April 13th, you'd have a meeting to, um, approve and review the, uh, brownfield plant. So that's sort of the next, the next steps that we've put out.
Yes, that's the timeframe that you would, that you would like to see.
Yes, that we would like to see.
What a tip, is 215 tip or is that something different than tip?
PA 210?
No, TIF is the brownfield.
Yeah, I have a question about the, the brownfield, so is the brownfield plan still part of this, not part of this? What's happening?
Oh, it, it is, but the commercial, it doesn't require you to create a district.
Right.
So, so we want to like stop the process, the process today is a hearing on the district. And actually, you don't need to have a hearing on a brownfield plan.
I understand that, I just meant as part of your, you know, your plan for your project, you're still seeking both. Okay.
And is it still the TIF financing kind of brownfield there? Okay, all right.
So three, three prongs, district, abatement, and TIF.
Correct, and they have to go, we have to go here to the county and back here, then back to the state.
Well, with that, why don't we open it up to the public, members of the public who would like to speak during the public hearing? Um, and, um, judging from what I'm able to see in the hall, um, we're looking for remote participation. Unless, unless, Linda, you wanted to speak?
I, 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 I did want to speak, um, even though I'm sitting next to Mark, obviously. I'm Jennifer, I've introduced myself before, but you know, why am I here? I work at Ann Arbor Spark, we're the Economic Development Organization, um, for Washington County, and my job is to attract companies to the region. And the reason I know Mark is because I put people in his buildings. What, and he has, for R and D, his space is very flex, the most flexible in Washington County. I actually show all spaces, but in the last six months, really, the only flexible space has been, um, park space at MIHQ, and I have actually a potential tenant, um, for his property at 300 Zeeb Road. In Ann Arbor, we, I, we do not have a lot of R and D buildings, and that's, like, that's our niche. We're, um, you know, the center of University of Michigan, so in the economic development world, no, no, no product, no, you know, no, no new jobs. So that's sort of why, um, we are advocating, um, for this project. So I'm just here for two reasons, one to su- to, to support, um, 300 North Zeeb Road, but, but most importantly, to support the use of economic development tools like creating a DDA, just a, a TIF process. Um, and we have used the 210 process, um, it's been used throughout the state of Michigan, and it's currently being used right now in Chelsea. They did a similar project where they stacked up a brownfield, um, TIF, and a 210, um, and they just passed that, um, in 2019. So, um, if you want to talk to the, to the city of Chelsea, we actually use their, advocated to use their policy for, um, examining the exemption. So again, the reason why we're here today, though, is to talk about the establishment of the Commercial Rehab District, which kind of sets you up to say, yes, we are interested in entering into public-private partnerships and utilizing this tool. And you're also saying by setting up this district, you're saying as a community that you are into redeveloping properties, because that's what you, you do with this, and, um, looking at a public-private partnership. Thank you.
Are there people participating remotely who would like to speak during the public hearing?
Um, yeah, please read, raise your Zoom hand, I see two hands, first up is Rob Pattinson, followed by Paula G. Rob? Thank you, Rob. Next up is Paula G. Paula?
Yeah, I, one question is, why do we even have to do this process tonight? Why do we have to commit to a commercial rehab without having, this kind of always seemed rushed to me. And I'm not even sure what kind of chemicals are over there. A few, actually, I was looking up wetlands a few different times. There's a huge wetland that goes down there. The tributary of Honey Creek, which has Artesians, is part of the problem of Galman. The pollution is not controlled from Galman, first off. And I appreciate what Rob is trying to say and what he's trying to advocate for that area, but I see some potential problems that goes down, goes back behind Pratt, and then it goes all the way down to Miller. And the aquifers for all those people are on wells. And then ultimately, it goes down to the Huron River, where everyone, Ann Arbor and I, my experience was, when I tried to do, get, we were very close to a Superfund cleanup. We had land apolic behind us. We had a very active member from Ann Arbor. Ann Arbor said, this isn't our problem, this is a SIO problem. And I noticed they're annexing problems now, properties due to the pollution. And I don't even know why in 1979, they agreed to this land grab along Wagner. So it's going to cost a lot of people. Right now, they're just taking vacant land. So when we're going to be, yeah, I'm not sure why we're splitting up the problem of tax abatement, TIF, and, you know, I look at the infrastructure here now, and we can't afford to even staff our current fire department. We're going to be giving tax abatements out. That's another thing that I considered when, because I watched their special presentation. And one of the things I have not liked about all boards is this rush to jump on board things, when they haven't thought out the process and they, and there's issues with giving huge tax abatements out. What about the traffic there? What are we going to do with the road pattern? On and on and on. So that's my concerns about that. Why we're even doing this process tonight? What's the, what's the rationale?
Thank you, Paula.
Yes.
Any other interested public? We have about 25 people in attendance virtually, but I see no other hands.
All right, in that case, we'll close the public session, or public, excuse me, the public hearing at 9:35. And we'll, we'll have some board discussion before we move on to the next agenda item. And perhaps you would like to stay and answer questions if there are questions from the board.
In the vein of next steps, we can also share some of the criteria, which I think we've shared with you in the package of the Chelsea template, but we can also postpone it to a future date.
I have a question. Is this something that would ordinarily or normally be kind of vetted or percolated up through the planning commission, who holds hearings and takes things, or just no need? It's a BOT policy?
Well, I think my, my understanding is that planning-
I'm not complaining, I'm just asking.
Planning commission would be, that would be sort of triggered, that process, if they were changing the footprint of the building. Then they would be, then automatically would sort of go, go to, yeah, site plans and all of that kind of stuff. But what I believe is being proposed here, if I understand correctly, is within the existing footprint of the building, and under those circumstances, it doesn't necessarily go to planning.
Same zoning and all that stuff.
Yeah, it falls within the zoning and uses. I saw a couple of hands.
Yeah, just, just on process-wise, because we've had a special meeting on this, we're having a public hearing tonight, got a couple items we thought might be ready to go. Yesterday, we sat down, asked some questions, we kind of realized they weren't ready to go. So my concern is process and kind of managing everybody's expectations. The Smiths, Jennifer, ours. My sense is that, you know, internally here, we don't have a strong champion kind of leading this process. So I just want to say that because I think that that's part of it is, and, and it's got to be, I think, and this is new, right? Like, we, we don't do these districts very often, and this type of district is new. But I would suggest that it would be assigned to our assessor or something like that. And we, we, I know there's different pieces, but internally, I'd like to have somebody, one of us or a staff person, be kind of thinking through the timeline and kind of getting the analysis. I appreciated you all sent the additional information. I just, we just got it today, and so I, I need to look through the spreadsheets and try to understand them. So I'll have follow-up conversations, because I think that the spreadsheets are what I was looking for in terms of the numbers and want to talk about those and kind of, kind of get some of, some of that. But I, I guess I just want to say that, that we need somebody on this board or on our staff who is going to carry this project.
You know what, Jessica, it's a great idea. You know what? I'll, I'll step up for this one.
Thank you.
She, she was scared of me the whole time, by the way.
No, no, no. No, 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 Jessica's suggesting this, but I do, you're a part of, you know, just process.
They're local to me now. I mean, I know your district now, fellow business owner, I, I, time is money. So I understand you guys want to get this thing going, right? I'm never your friend, ever, that I know of. But we have to watch out for what the best interests of SIO are. I guess I have a question to you guys. When you say abatement, can it be, is it all or nothing? Can there be like, hey, we're going to abate 50% of their taxes or 20%? It's going to be some kind of rolling schedule over a period of time?
You know, this is, this is all new. I would say, if you want to be-
Or is that, we don't know. That's the answer, we don't know.
If you want to be the champion of it, then it'd be like a part of-
Yeah, but he has some legal questions too, or some-
No, but it'd be a partnership with our attorney and our assessor.
So we're neophytes at this in general? Is that, is that a fair statement? So are you sensible?
This board hasn't dealt with any of these kinds of proposals. This particular kind of proposal has not come to SIO Township before. This board had, only prior proposal we had was last year when we had an industrial development district that was brought to the board, and that did not go forward.
So it sounds like more than even helping these folks get established and what's fair for them and fair for SIO Township is a documents process. We have it a second time.
They include a policy.
Right, we know what, we know what to do.
Somebody to manage the project.
Yeah, yeah, I could, this is-
So there's two, two things that we pulled from the agenda today. One of them was a policy that would be for, it would apply to this, but it would also apply to any other commercial rehab. So it, it's the policy that you're referring to. But then the other piece would have been an action to actually establish the district for this, these buildings on this particular, at this particular address.
And can you describe why we pulled that? I mean, generally?
So both of those were pulled because when we sat down with the township attorney, or attorneys on Monday, we talked, started by talking about the, the policy and we decided it really needed more work than we were able to do and get it to the board in any kind of timely fashion to review. So what you saw before it was pulled from the agenda was kind of a placeholder. It is the Chelsea policy that Mark was referring to. And so, so that was one step. And then the other step was we looked at the questions that we still had, partly is in talking about the policy, and realized that we had more questions than could merely be answered and incorporated into the resolution to form the district. So rather than rushing forward and having the board feel pressured to make a decision tonight, we thought it was better to move forward with the public hearing and then use the time between now and the 14th to get all our ducks in a row.
Yeah, that's reasonable.
And I'm really glad that you volunteered, Mark, to be the, the duck aligner.
Yeah, I'm glad too.
Okay. So when we previously met as a board and rejected the prior proposal, I voted yes on it, but other couple of yeses, but most voted no, it was rejected. So everyone stated that SIO Township needed to have policies, procedures to do this. And what, this is kind of boilerplate, what is in our packet. This doesn't represent dialogue and discussion among board members to come to conclusions about what we want to include. So I'm saying we may not be able to have that by February 14th. And I'm wondering, I mean, we need to have some discussion on it. It isn't something that you just extract from another, from a city.
I think that was basically, Kathy, what I, I think what you just said is sort of what the conclusion that we reached on Monday is that we didn't want to act on something that was simply boilerplate from someplace else, that we saw, and our attorney surfaced some issues, but we, in talking about it, we realized that we wanted to make it-
Ours.
Ours, and that we needed to bring a draft that was more SIO to the board for consideration. But obviously, the board would discuss it before adopting it and might make more changes before adopting it. And that policy, just to be clear, is aimed more at the tax abatement question than it is at the, the district question. So we need to have it in place more for the next step of the process than the first step.
But, but well, just to clarify, though, we wouldn't, and, and this is where I, I just wanted to be, be clear, is the resolution wasn't ready to go because of the, there, there's a timing issue, right? In creating the district, that you can create a district, you know, and then take some time to do a policy, but that there's a timing issue potentially between creating a district and when applications might be accepted, is something like that?
Well, I think that what the attorneys, the township attorneys advise, my understanding of it is that what really triggers the time is the submission of the official application. That's what starts the clock ticking. And once that application is submitted to the clerk, then the clock starts running and you have a certain timeframe in which to respond. I think it's 60, 60 days.
That's where I started this, is I said, does somebody have the application? Because that's the, where resolution says I'm supposed to have it.
Right, and we don't. We don't have, we don't, we don't have the completed application submitted to the clerk.
The application's been submitted and it was accepted by Andrea.
Well, and it has-
Did you know that?
Well-
I didn't. I mean, I mean, there's this whole question about, so, so Mark, it's good we're talking. So the, the attorney drafted a resolution. There was a whereas clause that said, whereas the clerk has received this. So I thought, hey, somebody's received it, you know, I just need to get it and put in the file, start file.
So Andrea Garrett, Andrea Garrett was pushing me to get it put in, so that-
And indeed, we, so the ownership was- So I was, I was told we, we explicitly did not have it. So again-
Well, you don't have it. And the attorney said that it's not accepted by the township and starting the clock until it's, you have it.
Okay, that's fine. I just want Mark, I just want our, our dear neighbors, Mark and Linda, to be having the same information we have, because I, yeah.
Julie and I have some questions.
Yes, thank you. So, okay.
Well, who's, I don't know.
No, I'm going.
Okay.
Back in the day, David Rowley had presented without the flow, but that was an ID, industrial, right? It was different. And this is commercial, and if we're going to create policies, is there anything else in statute regarding other types of districts that you?
I don't know.
Does that ring a bell for anybody?
The industrial development is-
IFT, that's it, yes. And there is a list on the Michigan Department of Treasury going back years. So there, it's nothing new, but it's not common for SIO. But anyways, you are taking on this project, but if, I know that the IDDs or whatever, sorry, getting the, the words wrong, but, or the, so IFT, thank you.
This is not one of them.
No, no, but if we're going, and it was recommended back then, even though we, we turned that down, David Rowley said, these are going to be presented to you in the future. It's inevitable that you should have a policy and procedure. So could we do this kind of all at the same time since they're, or separate?
I think we should keep it, we need to visit it. I, I think we should keep it separate for now, just keep it, just because it's in the statute, it's, it's different enough. But I, my sense is that it's, it's Mark, it's Mariah Fink, our attorney, or, or Jim, it's Andrea Garrett, our assessor, and then Will as supervisor, and also there needs to be the DDA nexus, right?
Well, that's for the brownfield.
But for this whole project, I think that's your team.
Yeah, I think the DDA, you want them to support whatever's going on.
The DDA is an economic developmental, like you create the DDA, so we are seeking their approval because it's in the DDA.
I have, I have some questions. So is, I don't want to, yeah, I don't want to confirm. Is the entire district, this blue parcel? It's not?
That's the, that's the parcel. The, the buildings are the, if I'm correct about-
The parcel is the, the district.
Well, the parcel is the district, correct?
Yeah, it's a combination of two tax descri, or two descriptions that comprise about 20, I can't remember, 29, six or 29 acres.
So that, that, that's the district right there. It doesn't go to the gas station or to Metzger's or to anything else? It's just that, right? Okay. And do we have, and it's called a commercial rehabilitation district? And, and do we have any other commercial rehabilitation districts? And, and, okay?
No. And may I add one thing?
Wait, when I get done with my question, but go ahead, I'll yield briefly.
Yep, you always yield to time. You were never given, and I always find it a little funny. But anyways, I, I, I will say, I asked Andrea how many other places might be eligible, and she said there's maybe one other place.
So this is the, we don't, this would be our SIO Township's first commercial rehabilitation district, correct?
Correct.
And then the second component is a potential tax abatement, right? That's, there's the, there's the tax capture, but that, is the tax capture different than the brownfield?
Capture has to do with the DDA. Let me, let, stop for a second.
Oh, I'm stopping.
Okay. As things sit right now, that will not change as far, as far as what SIO collects for taxes or whatever, because that will be capped at, at the taxable value, et cetera. Now, what increases in taxable value, that is what we're going to be dealing with in the, whatever the right, the, the tax abatement, however.
Well, there's abatement and there's capture.
Right.
So, so let me ask, is, is this parcel within the current DDA boundary?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
And they capture 50%.
So the DDA captures, the DDA captures taxes generally within the district?
Yes.
How does, how does this being in that district, how does this blue map, which is their site, being within the yellow map, which is the DDA district, what interplay is there between the tax capture that the DDA does on this parcel?
They capture 50%.
But they, but they don't because, remember, well, it's complicated because the value of the, the taxable value of that property has declined since the base was set back in the 1980s for the DDA. So actually, it's a negative that the DDA is paying out in order to make whole the other taxing recipients, because part of what was set at the beginning with the DDA is that tax, that sort of baseline.
You'll excuse me if at this juncture, I don't wholly understand that.
That's, that's been the problem.
And then the next question I have, and then, so understanding the district and the interplay between the DDA, and, and Jennifer, at some point, you'll get the last word on this, because you know more about this than obviously I do. And what about, do we do any abatements now for any entities in SIO Township?
Yes.
Do we abate taxes?
We have some.
We have some that are, that were established some time ago that are still in existence, still sort of playing out.
To the, what you said.
And Andrea should be at all future meetings.
To the IFT, IFT.
So, but those abatements are IFT abatements? Are they asking for an IFT or a brownfield abatement or a general, just- Are they asking for an IFT or a brownfield abatement or a general just abatement?
It's an IFT.
We're not asking for an IFT. We actually strategically did not want an IFT because we wanted to state that we're using a special tool for vacant properties. I mean, that's what, why we did that. We could have come, we could have, vac, it's a commercial, the commercial rehab exemption is specifically to rehab vacant.
Vacant property or vacant and distressed or vacant and environmentally?
No, just, yeah, all of the above, all of the, all of the above.
It's targeted at, at structures.
It's targeted at structures and the reason you don't have that many because you have to be older than twenty years.
We're a young township, we don't, there aren't that many buildings that would fall.
And so, I mean, I can print out, you have given over a dozen IFTs since your existence.
I would, I'd kind of want to know that, you know, I, I kind of want to know what, what our policy, I guess it's not a policy, maybe it is, or what our practice has been in this, in this regard and potential financial impact.
Yeah, it's been pretty liberal to grant the IFT.
Until you get here.
Until I, until.
So if I'm, I'm sorry, if I'm understanding, it's just for the building to, because you want to rehabilitate the building. So the, the land itself is still under the regular tax that we would collect.
Taxes, yeah, it's not abated on the land value, the land value.
And what about personal property?
Personal property, we looked at that for this, the purpose of tax recapture. There are so many, uh, programs available to personal property that can, you know, they can be abated already. Yeah, so we were kind of hopeful that, because there will be substantial personal property, probably twenty to a hundred million dollars worth of personal property going into this.
I didn't see that on your slide.
I'm sorry.
Was there a personal property?
No, yes, we did not touch on the personal property because after we went through and peeled back the onion, we found that the, the tenants and their personal property could file for exemption.
Yes.
For the types.
We want us to be very conservative and not include anything that you wouldn't get.
And personal property, even if they had come in and asking for that too, they're two separate taxing pieces. So that would be one on personal, um, IFT or whatever, in this case, and one on the valve or the building. So they're always treated separately, not together.
This little topic, I think, what's, what are you going to do with the rest of the property? I'm sorry, I've been kind of out of commission for a couple of weeks.
Um, you know, over the long haul, we'll probably look at minor expansions of the building itself through community work production. Um, but we plan to re-landscape and, and enhance the property primarily, uh, as I, as I discussed, we'll, we'll use a combination of native grasses and areas, we'll try to rehabilitate some of the grass. We'll, we're looking at studying the, uh, the heavy metals which are down around the pond, the retention pond, to see if they should be kept in remaining place for less exacerbation potential or removed. Uh, one of the thought is to expand that pond to use in a geothermal system. Uh, so we, we'll have to find what's, what's best in all these cases with regard to the heavy metals that are there. Inside the building, we have a lot of asbestos. It's mostly, it's all non-friable, uh, seal floor tiles and ductwork in the, in the mezzanine. And then there's a small section of, uh, all organic compounds in the soils underneath a part of the processing inside the building. So we plan to mechanically remove those soils and dispose of them.
Thank you.
Yep.
So, and I, I think.
You're done?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I'm sorry, okay.
Just asked enough questions to confuse me.
You look, you look like you were about to answer another question, aren't you?
I'm going to try and put all this together and plan. The idea would be I'd give synopsis on challenge, solution, challenge, solution, challenge. So we can all understand it, get your feedback, solicit all your feedback. I'm not going to have all the answers, at least try to collect the data that's. The tool is customized to try to incentivize reinvigoration or redevelopment of existing sites instead of developing greenfields. There are some good infrastructure bones in this building that we can use. There are some specialized spaces that are important to the types of things we do, such as clean rooms, um, and, uh, dry rooms and things stuff like that. So there's good infrastructure there that we can use. But, you know, the diminution in value is, is sort of a sign of its decay and becoming blighted. And it's going to take more effort now than it would have ten years ago. And it's helpful to have this sort of tool to offset some of those costs.
And with these spreadsheets that you sent, what should I, what should I be taking away from that? When I read that, what should I?
You know, there's a lot of information there, isn't there? I was, I was kind of quickly trying to glean through there to answer some questions that others had. Um, what that'll show you is, is the future valuation, future taxes, the, the capture tax, that the TIF reimbursement, uh, payback, which comes from other, other sources. And, uh, yeah, and what, what that all means as far as.
Um, what, I, I understand that there's another variable, that there needs to be an agreement with the DDA?
No, not necessarily.
No?
No, the, uh.
Can you talk to me about what that is or?
If, if the interlocal agreement between the DDA and the county were put in place, it would shave about a year off of the tax abatement. If, if they did not participate in that, we could still go forward. It would simply add one year of the tax capture, one or two years of the tax capture. I mean, from the way I'm looking at this team, you guys tell me, right? If I'm looking at this wrong, I'm going to assume that we're going to get all the environmental issues addressed. Those are somehow going to get remediated if they thought this through, they've looked at it from, you know, our highest loyalty. Because I don't want to go off, there's so many rabbit holes we can go down here. I don't want to try to avoid them. The, the best thing is, you know, what's the ROI here? I mean, there's going to be a jobs ROI, what kind of jobs are we going to get? There's an increased traffic, that's a legitimate concern. Um, what, what impacts negative or positively, or positively are going to impact CIO? And then it comes down to really the money. Those things all have to be worked out that's amicable for them to, incentive enough for them to want to do this project, yet we are getting our, our fair share, right? We don't want to shortchange ourselves and ten years from now, we got this much tax, we should be getting this much tax. You know, because there's no guarantee, let's say, for example, you put a hundred employees there, there's no guarantee those hundred employees will be part of CIO. They may be coming in from Detroit or from Southfield. So those are just the things we got to consider when we look at it, what's the risk profile, all those things. But to me, it's all down to this, the money, right? And again, it's enough for you to want to enter expeditiousness of moving this along quickly because that's cheaper for you.
Time is money, as you say.
Time is money.
It's also important for us to get, uh, you know, get equipment planted and start producing. There's, these are the types of jobs, I think, that, you know, Spark certainly in the state have, have suggested they want to attract.
Spark is awesome, I mean, you guys helped me out at a certain time in life. So, yeah, duly, duly appreciate it, but those folks do.
As far as who we're going to capture as a, as a township resident, that's hard to say. But these are going to be, you know, eighty thousand dollars and up and probably in the mid hundreds for a lot of these jobs. They certainly will stay in the area to dine and shop and.
Yeah, they'll be here, they'll park here, they'll, yeah, they'll, they'll go to our bars and restaurants, all those, all those good things.
And I know the, the traffic issue keeps popping up. We're not going to be as dense as ProQuest was when they were here. We have got five hundred parking places. I, I would expect we're going to be something close to three hundred at full buildout.
I'm not concerned, look, there's plenty of traffic on that road already. So you got a, a few more cars coming or going on a, what, a six lane or whatever, how many lanes that is, I haven't put that, I don't.
And I was concerned.
It's something to look at, but I, I don't see how that would be a concern. You're not like on a two-lane road.
Right, and I've been concerned about traffic there, so I've been testing it at different times of the day. And actually, with the light there in front of, uh, the shop, the little shopping center, it checks traffic and it's very easy to make a left-hand turn, get into the left-hand turnway and then merge.
And you got Myers right over there giving, giving their fair share of traffic. So, yeah, I, I can't see that being a, it's a concern, but I can't see it being a problem.
I think it won't be less dense than ProQuest was.
And, and what was it, Will, that, that triggered the traffic study last time? Because wasn't that one of the issues with the prior proposal?
So, yeah, man, man.
Six, three thousand trips per day.
Yeah, they, they had a much, much denser development proposal. They had, you know, two hundred units of residential, a, a drive-through, uh.
Oh, yeah, they're coming, going all the time, that makes sense.
No, no, I, I understand.
You come at eight AM, you leave at five.
I, I understand the reality, but I'm asking process-wise, what triggered them having to have that traffic study?
The proposal.
Well, it's like.
And they wanted to do.
Was it doing a site plan?
No, well, they never got to that point. They were testing the water and as part of that, they went and met with the road commission, I believe. That's how it started. The road commission said, if you're going to do a development like this, then we expect you to solve the problem of North Zeeb and we're, you know, we're going to require this, this, and this.
So they were, yeah.
So how do we know that's not going to happen again?
They were talking, they were talking about a rezoning, you know, to a PUD, mixed use. We are not talking about rezoning, we're talking about a my right use of the property as it exists today.
So again, I don't think we can solve all this stuff today. I mean, we're going to go downtown, let, let me aggregate a document together that we can all digest, solicit all your feedback and questions, and then kind of go from there or we'll just kind of go all over.
So just to be clear about answering your question, the thing that Mark said that would potentially trigger in our process, a traffic study would be changing the footprint of the building. So if you build the, if you got to the point where you're building an addition, or adding more buildings to the site or something like that.
More than five percent of the current existing, um, square footage would have to be added on to trigger a CIO.
Mark, I can't believe you're not saying this. I mean, he's looking at this building because we have tenants that can occupy it. He can't build a new building as cost-effective and as timely as doing this building. You know what I mean? So it's kind of this, why we're looking at this building versus building a brand-new building on your site.
There is certainly a timing risk that we lose the company, the major company will go out of the region or even out of the state.
So, i- i- am I right that the taxable value is, uh, is one dot eight, one, one point eight million?
I think, uh, that there's a, you know, it's a blend of, of land and building. The building's valued at like seven or eight hundred thousand, the rest is land.
Right, so.
And the building, even though it doesn't look like.
Three big houses.
Well, it's, it, it doesn't, it doesn't look that, you know, impressive. It actually is designed by a relatively renowned architect.
It's an alderbeedal design, uh, so it has some, some historic significance for architecturally. That's the original piece to the building. The original part of the building is, is cast concrete, so it's going to stand for a long time to come. The others are essentially tack-on morton buildings that are, you know, just wide open shelves.
Well, I want to see this corner look alive again.
We're going to figure out how to make it all happen.
It's been that way for a long time.
Look as we can.
I know you, that was a comment you wanted to make.
That's the comment.
I told me you knew where the comment you wanted to come from.
Active, it's in the center of our township, it's the cross.
It is a front door, isn't it?
I think that is why, in fact, it was labeled community center, uh, not a DDA plan at one point.
Yes, yeah.
Um, all right, well, um, with that, um, thank you, Mark, for volunteering to.
Sure, I signed up for it.
Yeah.
We'll, we'll figure it out. I'll start with you folks, we're going to get together.
Well, I did, I think Jessica, a moment ago, listed other people's.
Yes, yeah, I should start with them first and then go work with my team and then just start aggregating the data, we'll, we'll put it together.
We'll get it all.
Project Management 101.
Thank you very much, thanks for waiting, um, to this, for having us to this point.
You've got my contact information, yeah.
Question. We have where to find you. Yeah, nowhere to find you.
Thank you, Jennifer.
So that brings us, um, to unfinished business. Do we need, I just want to test here, it's ten o'clock, do we need to take a, a break?
Five-minute break.
A five-minute break?
Yeah.
All right, so let's take a recess for five minutes. We'll come back at a, a little around, uh, ten after or thereabouts, um, and then we'll move on to the next, uh, part of the agenda.
Good. Meanest banana.
Thank you.
No.
I mean, I won't touch it, I'll just, you know.
I know. Well, thank you. They did lost.
No, no, I got it.
Let's bring it back. Whoa, pretty much unscheduled to bring it back. Five minutes. Okay, so this brings us to unfinished business and that is, um, that item is the, um, appointments to the compensation commission. Um, there are two vacancies and, um, there are two nominees. Um, the details are spelled out in the agenda item. But the model motion is to approve the appointment of Jim Dries to the compensation commission for a five year term. And Diane Benson to serve the remainder of a term ending on November 23rd, 2024. Commit, and both of these cases commencing immediately.
I'd like to make a motion to divide the question, to consider each of these applicants separately.
I'll support.
So we have a motion to divide the question and break it into two motions, I suppose.
It's cleaner.
Um, well, so the motion is by Flintoff, support by Noel. Um, is there discussion of the motion to divide the question?
Why? If, I guess.
It's cleaner. I think it's, I just think that, you know, each, each person should have a chance to be voted up or down. These are extremely different candidates and I think that it's cleaner. I mean, for a compensation commission, I think we should be, um, in particular, make sure that we've got a process, um, for, for each one. So, I mean, they're, they're substantively different.
Can I ask one question? I'm just, because I just don't know. Is, so let's say the one person goes for a year and their term expires. Can that person then go for the next five, like, reapply for them the next five years? So theoretically, they could be six years?
Well, so.
I don't think there are term limits. Yeah.
No, the, the way that the language of the ordinance is written, um, is that the initial appointments were staggered. And that if you're appointing someone to fill out the remainder of someone's term, that you, you, they, you can't sort of start a new term at that point. They have to serve out that term that was vacated by that whoever left. So we have one of those and we have one term that's completely over. So in one case, we're appointing someone to a full five year term. The other case, we're pointing someone to a, or nominating someone to a, um, partial term that was vacated when someone moved out of the township. And, um, in, in conversation with that applicant, I explained that, you know, presumably if, um, she wanted to continue at that point, then we would reappoint her, board would reappoint her.
Okay, so that was my question. So, so Diane, right? So Diane served a year and then she's, at the end of that term, said, hey, I, I'm, I'm good with this. I'd like to continue on. She could then serve the next five years for a total of six years.
Then she'd get a full five year appointment and, and, but it would be, it would honor the sort of intent of having staggered appointments.
Yes, that makes sense. Okay, so, all right, cool.
So motion on the.
Yeah, it's, it's, it, the ordinance language models, is modeled after the state law.
Okay. So the motion to divide the question to consider each nominee separately. Flintoff, Noel.
Wait a minute, can you?
No?
Yes, no.
Wait, no, no, she's, she's trying to.
I was just restating.
She's trying to bring it back.
Motion by Flintoff, second by Noel, motion to divide the question to consider each nominee separately.
I thought you said no rather than no.
So did I. Oh, excuse me.
Yeah, yeah, I'm like, why are you voting all right?
No, and she would vote, yeah, same thing, so.
But you were just by acclamation.
Yeah, so I, I, I disagree that it's, it's somehow better to vote on them separately, but I, I get it.
Let's roll call.
I get it that, wait a second, please. I get it that people want to do that. Some people want to do that. And I don't see a huge problem with that. So, yeah, if you want to just do it by acclamation.
We could find out who wants to do it by roll call.
Or we could just do it by acclamation as was suggested. Is there anyone opposed to it? Okay, so, um, then why don't we go ahead and divide the question? We'll just say all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, so let's proceed and deal with each of them in order. Um, so first of all would be, um, to approve the appointment of Jim Dries to the compensation commission for a five year term commencing immediately.
Well, you might, I just have just a couple of quick questions. So you've talked to both these individuals?
Yes.
And do they both realize the commitment that they made? So.
Yes.
Diane realizes it's one year and Jim Dries understands it's five. And does Diane also recognize that she could reapply and does she, and she showed any desire that she'd want to reapply every year?
That's the sense I had when I met, when I came with her.
She is, oh.
If you have any questions.
Okay.
Well, we, we, we could ask questions of her, I suppose, but I don't think it's necessary. I had the conversation with her and my understanding was that she would, the impression I had, I guess I should say, is that she would be interested likely, um, at the end of serving out the remainder of that term and continuing on on the compensation commission.
But the, but it would be a new board at 2024, I would say. And so that's another variable.
Yeah.
Was it discussed with Jim to have one year and Diane have five?
I call the question.
Okay.
On Jim Dries and then I'll call the question on Diane Benson. I don't have any problem reaffirming her next, uh, year.
Okay.
Well.
All right, so.
If I'm here.
Yeah.
Yeah, um, so just, I had my hand up, but didn't get called on. I want to clarify that you have represented to Diane that if she wants to be on this app more than one year, that she would most likely be reappointed.
That's, that's the conversation that I had with Diane just a few days ago.
And Will, how did we get to November 23rd? Is that really the date that Balding was appointed?
Yeah, all of them were, um, approved and started at the same time. And so I, I pulled this actually from the township web, the township website. All of the terms end on that same date, it just, you know, a year apart.
Yeah, yeah, it's just a, it's, it's just a funny one because it's three days after we take, but that makes sense. And, and Will, I, I do want to ask, and I've raised this before, but it, it begs the question because the compensation commission is the body that determines salaries. And so of all the committees that we appoint to, you know, this is one of the few that you have sole nominating power on. It is the only one that recommends our salaries. And so I think that it helps everybody if we're completely above the fray on all of this. Even with the best of intentions, to make sure that it's as clean as possible. So my question to you is, we have had people apply for the compensation commission who are qualified that you have not brought forward. And several times, Jim Dries being the most recently one, instead of considering qualified people who have applied, you know, we have Bob Roden, Jonathan Greenberg, Froda, I apologize, Messaday. You know, we've got Julie Beer, John Dunlap, we have these people and who are qualified, who have applied to be on the compensation commission. And instead of going with an applicant, we've gone with Monica Knowles, Erwin Martin, Balden Clark, and now Jim Dries, who you recruit, who are fine people, but they're also your political allies.
Wait a minute, let's stop right there.
Political contributors.
Stop right there. These people are very qualified. Diana's phenomenal. Jim Dries was a trustee a number of years back, plus his job with the county treasurer's office. He phenomenal, he did a phenomenal job.
And it's not, she's not about standing quiet.
And she's not saying, but what I'm saying.
Yeah, no.
And let's vote on them.
So, so my.
We need our discussion.
But my, but my point is, is that, you know, when we talk about process, we have people who have applied, who are qualified and, and, and time and time again, you know, you bring these people that instead of going with the people who apply, you go out and find them.
So we have a motion made by.
And it doesn't look ethical, Will.
Trustee Riser, um, to call the question on the motion.
But it wasn't seconded.
But it wasn't seconded. Is there a second? Okay, we have a second by Palmer. That ends debate. Um, we will now vote on calling the question on the motion. Please call the roll.
Can you please state the motion?
The motion is to call the question. So first we have to vote on calling the question.
Oh, gotcha.
And then we have to vote on the motion.
Flintoff, yes. Brazil?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Riser?
Yes.
Hathaway?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
So we've called the question on the motion to approve the appointment of Jim Dries to the compensation commission for a five year term commencing immediately. Please call the roll.
And I would just state, are we having discussion?
No, there's no discussion. We've called the question and now we're moving on to vote.
See, that's the problem.
See, that's the problem. I mean, I just, I just want to state, it has nothing to do with, it has nothing to do with.
The question has been called and now it's time to vote. So call the roll.
So a motion to appro.
To approve the appointment of Jim Dries to the compensation commission for a five year term commencing immediately.
I just want to make sure I've got it. So it's, the motion's by.
Oh.
Who made it? Did you want to move Jim Dries? You spoke highly of him.
Sure, I will move Jim Dries. I thought we'd done it.
And I, I would second Jim Dries.
Okay, so Palmer moves and support from Riser.
And I'll be voting no because this is the wrong way to do things. No, Flintoff. Brazil?
Yes.
Carrie?
No.
Noel?
Yes.
Riser?
Yes.
Hathaway?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Motion passes five to two.
So the next motion is on appointing Diane Benson to serve the remainder of a term ending November 23rd, 2024 to the compensation commission commencing immediately.
And I would move, uh, to appoint her to the compensation commission commencing immediately.
I support.
And if there's discussion, I think she's got great credentials. I thought that Mr. Dries had great credentials and I'm going to support both of them. And if it's only a year term, then God willing, I'll be here in a year because it's a year and I, I've got two years left. Then I would support her being reappointed and then she'll end up getting six years instead of the five that Dries only gets.
Or she could have gotten five tonight.
I, I, I agree, but my point is, I, this is not an anti Diane vote. I, I.
That, it is not about that. It is about the process that we had five applicants.
But my point, but here's the thing on that. If we, two weeks ago or a week ago, took away a lot of Will's duties, we took away all his non statutory duties other than that which we give him. Like, if this is one of the relics of, of, of something he has, of a privilege he used to have, and I don't mean to insult you to your face right there.
No, no, I agree.
If this is one of the vestiges of the authority that he used to have or still has, then, then if he gets to make the appointments, then he gets to make the appointments up or down with us.
And he certainly does. And I wish he would do it in a way that was honored the community a little bit more than it does.
But, but I think it does because the people that he's submitted, they had resumes and I thought they had bona fide credentials. I'm not talking.
I'm not saying that they don't, but so did four or five other people.
But it was Will's decision.
And it was Will's decision.
So we know that Will made it. We'll call the shot.
And, and he did.
Let's move on.
So I'm, just to make sure I'm clear, who made the motion and who seconded it? It was.
Riser made a motion.
And I seconded.
Okay, so it was the other way around. So Riser, Riser moved, Palmer supported. So is there further discussion of the motion to appoint Diane Benson to the compensation commission commencing immediately?
I just want to say Diane is the only HR professional, um, on the compensation commission. Um, HR being the main duty of the compensation commission. So I'm really grateful, um, to have her on there. Um, I hope we can find other people, um, with, you know, that sort of HR management type of experience too. So just appreciate both hers and Jim's willingness to serve.
Is there any other? I'm sorry, did you have a comment?
Yeah, everybody was willing to serve. Yeah.
Okay, all right, then please call the roll on the motion.
Flintoff, yes. Brazil?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Riser?
Yes.
Hathaway?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
All right, that brings us to new business. Um, first item of new business, K1, is, um, the Parks and Recreation and Open Space Plan. So we have a motion to approve and a resolution which is attached to adopt the 2023, 2027 Parks Recreation and Open Space Plan. Is there?
Um, there he's, I, do you want, Chris has been here, Chris and Anna? Do you want them on or not?
Sure, please. Chris, Anna, uh, if you're available, um, you could speak to this motion, this item on the agenda before we move on to actual vote.
That does not sound like Chris.
No.
She made the, she made, need to go in, go in and go out again.
Yeah, it's pretty late for someone that small to be up.
Let's try this. Does that work better?
Yes, that works better.
I apologize. Sometimes my, uh, microphone gets a little wonky on me, so. Um, I just wanted to let you know that Anna and I spent, oh, about two or three hours going through and making edits to the plan based on the comments that we received at the public hearing, um, and comments we received from, uh, Jessica. I, I think, I think the plan's very strong, um, and, and definitely reflects the concerns that you had. Um, we added a little bit of language in there, um, reflecting a desire to see, uh, or a desire to pursue an active use facility, something that, as you guys mentioned, would, um, accommodate users from a variety of backgrounds, from young children to seniors. Um, we strengthened the language on the ADA requirements, which I think makes a lot of sense. And, and generally, uh, and, and added a little bit of language in there about, um, the potential for a dog park too. So I, I think that we've, we've been able to coalesce all the comments that we received from the, the park, uh, the, uh, parks, paths, and, I'm sorry, parks, reserves and pathways, um, as well as your concerns, uh, to provide a document that really does represent the township well.
Great, thank you.
Is Anna here? Does she want to add anything?
Anna, do you have anything to add?
Hi, I think Chris well said and I'm happy to help out to answer any questions tonight, if you all have any.
Thanks, Anna.
Are there any questions, uh, from members of the board for either, uh, Chris or Anna?
The only question I had, and I'm going to, if I don't move this, I'm surely going to vote for it tonight. But to, we, time is of the essence. We need to do this today. But is there something that we need to do or have we s- save some flexibility if we need to make some changes? Because I think, didn't that.
Yeah, we can make all the changes we want, I thought.
Yeah, you can amend it.
I don't know, Chris or Anna, to John's point, I agree.
Chris wanted to speak on that.
Um, we, I don't know when we recommend we revisit this, like in six months, twelve months, when?
So you always have the opportunity to amend this plan. Um, you, you would be able to submit your amendment once a year on February 1st, the same as you would, um, if you were putting in a new plan. But you do have that opportunity that if over the coming year, um, some new property shows up or, you know, there's a change in the township in some fashion or, or whatever it may be, a change in philosophy, et cetera, you can make an amendment to the plan. It just has to go through the public, uh, review process again, uh, and have a public hearing. But at that point, it's just a matter of submitting that amendment and it's part of the record.
There was, there's already some changes, right? If I remember correctly, a couple of weeks ago.
Yeah, that's what he was just saying. They incorporated a lot of changes from the public hearing and comments that were received.
So we just approved this and we don't have to unless we open it up later.
Right, unless there's a reason to change, make changes, um, such as Chris just described. But it sounds like there's a, there's a process and a timeframe for doing so on an annual basis.
And this is every five years? This is like the master plan?
Yeah, it's just like the, it is, in fact, I think it's called a master plan.
Yeah, but, um.
Great, thank you, Chris and Anna.
So, um, Treasurer Palmer, would you like to make the motion?
Sure. To approve the attached resolution to adopt the 2023 through 2027 Parks Recreation and Open Space Plan.
Is there a second?
I would support.
So move by Palmer, support by Riser. If there's some further discussion, um, please call the roll.
Flintoff, yes. Brazil?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Riser?
Yes.
Hathaway?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Motion passes, resolution adopted.
Great. Um, that brings us to item K2. Um, this is the short term finance staffing support item. Um, and Mark, do you want to introduce this particular item?
We've heard a lot tonight. I think that, uh, addresses the needs that we hope to, uh, we hope to address, I guess, uh, with some short term help coming in. Um, um, we will be meeting on Friday with one company that might potentially provide this support. It's called Manor Casterison. I think I mispronounced, I think that's the pronunciation of, of the, of the last name. We hope to find at least one other company to talk to. Um, we have a brief scope of services that we identified for the board. Um, that scope honestly is going to move a little bit when they get here and we see what the needs are. But the things that are identified in that scope certainly will be part of it. Um, uh, we hope that they can provide immediate help so that, uh, the audit the next time through is, is more positive. And the audit is a reflection of what we do. So if what we're doing here is better and right, then the audit just happens sort of naturally. Uh, so the, the key to having a good audit is having good practices. And, and that's really what we, that's what we're looking for here. And we need some help, both in terms of expertise and just, uh, sort of people power as well. So, and, and this is, I have to admit, it's a little open ended, but we've got to get moving on this.
Well, good. I have a big motion.
I'll support.
I guess we have an affirmative vote.
So move by Brazil and support by.
Carrie.
Carrie, all right, um.
Um, there's some friendly amendments, um, care of our township attorney, if I could, Mark. Um, authorize the interim township manager to develop one or more contracts because maybe for a short term immediate finance staffing assistance for a period not to exceed six months and an amount not to exceed ninety thousand payable from Fund 191. The bidding procedure will be waived in this instance. Any contract shall be subject to township attorney approval and supervisor and clerk are hereby authorized to sign.
That's good.
Yes.
So to develop contracts.
Are those friendly amendments, Brazil and Carrie, acceptable?
Yes, ma'am.
Like, develop.
We're just trying to move it forward.
So develop and engage in, like.
Well, he's not authorized to engage in the contract.
But you folks are.
Right, if, as long as the board's authorized. So that's what we're trying to keep moving.
All right.
Okay.
And we're still searching for a finance director.
Yeah.
Yes.
So this is kind of emergency interim.
This is, you know, until.
Hold the board out. All right, call the roll or.
Yeah, unless there's. I would, are we spending money? So we got to vote? I don't know how it works.
Yeah, it's your big roll call.
Roll call for spending money.
Flintoff, yes. Brazil?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Riser?
Yes.
Hathaway?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, that brings us to the additional items, um, called K5, um, and Treasurer Palmer, I'll, I'll let you.
Can I move it so we can get it on the floor and then discuss it?
Sure.
Sure, can't we discuss first, first of all?
Well, we can move it in, then we've got the motion.
Yeah, yeah, I'm not going to.
Okay, just don't cut off the bait again.
I'm not going to do that, Jess.
All right.
I move, I just want to get it on the floor so we can discuss. I move to Silo Township, extend the contracts for Nancy Colasanti, part time employee in the treasurer area, and the contract for Lori Carey, the part time employee in the utility department.
I support.
Okay, so move by Riser, support by Palmer. Now, let's have a discussion. Uh, I saw a hand raised. Were you seeking to speak? No, okay, all right.
Yeah, just some points of information. Um, I have, so, and we, we're bringing Mark up to speed on this. So we have some people on contracts who don't need to be on contracts, some people not on contracts. So it's, it's kind of this thing. Um, I will say, um, I'm, I'm supportive. I mean, Lori and Nancy supportive of keeping them going. I, I will note, you know, being, trying to stay consistent here, Mark, I don't know if you and Donna have talked about this, um, motion. But, but Nancy and Lori are two of our part time employees where, you know, some receive prorated PTO, some don't, the wages. So at budget time, I really want to, one, ask us to look at all of this. Carrie, we got five people, we have some equity issues we need to look at. But two, Nancy Colasanti is a temporary, um, employee of the administrator supporting the supervisor and the treasurer, is how we adopted that. So just so we have it here, so that it would report to.
So it isn't an authorized position?
It is an authorized position hired by the administrator, supporting fifty percent treasurer, fifty percent supervisor, but it's been mostly treasurer. Nancy just does treasurer. So we could, you know, I'm just saying that's what we had adopted at the time. And then, um, Lori has been, you know, doing a tremendous job. Um, and I think Mark's looking at that position to see how to fill it. But has somebody talked to Lori or Steve, her supervisor?
In regards to this?
Yes.
No, because these contracts run out the end of this month.
That's right.
When do they? I thought they were already out.
No, January 31st, I think is when they run out.
Honestly, I've not looked at the contracts. I've been told that they run out the end of.
I've been told that they run out the end of this month.
That's my, that's my understanding.
Okay, my understanding was Lori was without a contract anyways. I'm sure she'd be happy to have one. But I just, it's a point of process, we should. Okay.
So, so.
So.
Jess, I want to thank you for pointing that out. You make good points. The question I have is like, should they, shouldn't they report to the Township Manager? Or should they do?
What I am saying is who they do report to. So what I'm saying is.
I know.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So I'm just saying, and, and this motion said the Treasurer's area and, and the authorized position was to support the Treasurer and the Supervisor.
It says a part-time employee in the Treasurer's area, a part-time employee in the Utility Department. I didn't say, nor did I mean to say to whom they should report.
No, no, I'm telling you who they do report based on the positions we create.
Right, and if that needs a tweak.
Are we changing that?
It does sit in the Treasurer's area.
I understand that, but I, I wasn't trying to get them, I.
No, no, I'm just saying, like, I, I'm, I'm, I'm just saying, if we want to change this weekend, it's just.
No, no, stop. We're getting in the weeds again. I just want these people for another three months so we don't end up in further financial stress.
Oh, absolutely, Donna.
And I don't.
Call the question.
And, well, I, no, no, I have questions, Donna.
Yeah, what does Nancy do exactly?
I'm trying to stop God.
She helps with the tax receipt that comes through, you know, the mail.
Do the call the question.
You know, it's excellent.
I'd like that, Jess.
Yeah, I know.
And it's just to get the payments recorded.
Okay, I just didn't know we were at any risk of losing these people.
I remember.
Lori, Lori's had a lot of questions about, you know. So anyways, I just want to say that we appreciate everybody's work and I want to make sure that we're communicating with them appropriately.
I, I think, and this really came to my attention just today.
Just today?
That this situation was, if this, this urgency was there, the, the, well, the, the Treasurer did bring up last week in a meeting where we were talking about the prior agenda item, that she hoped that we could find a way to keep Nancy Colasanti in, in a, in a longer-term position and that there was more that we could turn to from, for Nancy for. But I did not realize when we had that conversation that there was a deadline sort of looming in terms of the employment agreement between Nancy and the Township. And I was also not aware that, that, that similar deadline was looming for Lori. So this, that's what I mean when I say that came to my attention just today. And my understanding is that this, this would offer the Township Manager an opportunity to work with both of them and to talk with Steve, for example, and explore whether there, you know, you know, are other concerns, other things that we should be thinking of here.
And if I could just say, say one more thing, is that on this memo, and I don't think you meant this, Donna's an implication, but the full-time utility support person, it just may be, these may be extended again. We, I don't want, I don't want it to seem like, you know, you know,
I didn't.
This is gonna end in a few.
I stopped my motion there.
That wasn't part of the motion.
I, I only did the first paragraph.
I know, I'm just being clear, because this will be in the record.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
We're talking about people's jobs.
You want to go first? Jessica, so these, it sounds to me, when I spoke with Mark earlier, that this was a surprise because he didn't know about it. And, you know, are there any other employees under contract and?
Yeah, we're still, I mean.
That are coming up.
Mark and I will have to dig through emails and paper and then report back to you. Right now, the best documentation we have is this. If anybody would like, this is the documentation of everything we have authorized. And so in terms of, you know, personnel files, contracts coming up, somebody needs to work on that.
I just feel like we're always behind on everything. And this is not very our new manager.
And Donna, have you talked to both of these people?
Nancy, I mean, she was part of her, her agreement contract ends the thirty-first. I can't lose her.
Okay, but I mean, have you had dialogue with her?
Not a lot. Hardly have chance to say hello with all the impact right now.
We were.
And I have not with Lori, excuse me.
Has anyone talked to Lori?
It's my next question.
I've talked to Lori today.
Yeah.
So they have to work.
She does not.
They don't have a choice now.
Yeah, she doesn't want a full-time job.
She doesn't have to, she doesn't have to sign a renewal of the contract. But the last, the last time, I can address the question that you posed, if I, if I may. So we did have a conversation, Mark and Mark Thompson, Thompson and I, with Nancy this afternoon after this came up and talked this through with her. I think she's very interested in continuing to work for the Township. She would actually like to move from a contract position to a part-time employment position with the Township. She's, I think, kind of tired of this, you know, renewal of contract approach. And I, I, you know, this was what we viewed as sort of the best we could do on short notice, was to extend the contract. But it's, I think the intent is to, to talk with her and to, you know, see if it makes sense and the board would support creating a part-time position. But we're not at that.
That should be part of the budget process.
Yes, yeah, yeah, no, it's, it's obviously has lots more implications than extending a contract, a short-term contract. Now, the last time when I talked with Lori was when her contract was about to expire before. And she was interested at that time, very interested in continuing in that capacity, part, part-time. And so I assumed that it hasn't changed. But by the time we were addressing this issue, she was gone for the day. So it was, you know, we didn't have the same option to sit down with her. But this gives our Township Manager the option to do so.
Is, how many hours per week is Nancy currently working?
Two days. Or three, right now, she, she'll even come in three because of the vote.
Eight-hour days.
Yes.
Okay.
Actually, I just want to have quite eight, maybe seven.
Well, just, I said a moment ago, I hadn't talked with Lori. I hadn't talked with her today. I've talked with her about interest in employment here previously. But just to be clear, that discussion didn't occur today. And, and I, when we had the previous discussions, I wasn't, wasn't, was not aware of this deadline. We did speak, when I spoke with Nancy earlier today, I would say that we were clear with her that this was, this was an extension of the existing situation. She did express interest in being a permanent part-time. And I've said, we're, we're not gonna go to the Board and ask to change the authorized strength here without some more background. So this is sort of an intermediate step. And she was a little disappointed in that, seems, but we'll see where it goes.
And, and I would ask for, Mark, I mean, the budget is right around the corner. Donna, if you, you know, want additional, you know, put that in the budget, put that in the budget, look at all of it together so that we're looking at all the changes in positions. Because, I mean, we've got some people who are underutilized and some people who are overburdened. And I, I do think that the splits that we have with the Supervisor and Treasurer should be looked at, both for that assistant position as well as for the Deputy Supervisor, Deputy Treasurer, because I think we all recognize that the work in the Treasurer's office has grown. And I would like to have those people focused on the Treasurer's office duties.
We're gonna make a motion to move?
I, I, I think the motion has been made. I guess the question is, are we ready to call the, call the roll? All right, please call the roll.
Flintoff, yes? Brzeo?
Yes.
Carey?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Riser?
Yes.
Hathaway?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Motion passes, seven zero.
All right, that brings us to our second round of public comment. Are there people participating remotely who would like to comment at this time? If so, please raise your Zoom hand to indicate your desire to do so.
Great, please raise your hand. First up is Paula G., followed by Rob and Joe Pattinson. Paula?
Yeah, about the contract for the building. If, if, I think I read it today with your, there's a DDA meeting that I want to suggest that Trustee Brzeo watch on the tax abatement issues. And I also want to bring that, that special area includes, if I read it correctly, them being able to build an additional building. And that was my concerns with the wetland. Because I'm gonna go back to, people need to read your ordinances. If how Aubrey Grove ever got agreed upon, I have no idea. Because if you read your own wetlands, the EPA and the State of Michigan, some townships even tell people, when you buy a property, if it is near a wetland and it's this size or that size, please read the ordinances and the statutes that apply to things you're voting on. Because that's a big problem. We talk about process, but I'm gonna say, sometimes it's just ignorance. And when you vote on things before you've informed yourselves, it's a problem. A big problem. And even this public hearing was rushed. Our new Administrator, I don't know who was prompting him at your last board meeting, but said, oh, we gotta get this public hearing on there. I realize time is money, but you don't want to make major decisions, especially giant tax abatements, and Brown, you haven't even read the stuff over. Please do it correctly. And Hathaway, you said, this doesn't include any new buildings. And what I read, that is not a true statement. I may be wrong, but I will double-check it. So when you're making statements, know your facts. And I'm really tired of it. I've watched different boards and all of you. You just go, oh, that sounds like a great idea. You have no idea whether you're, how you're gonna finance it or how it's gonna be carried out. This is a job for you. So I, I've actually, I'm really tired of it. And you knew a year and a half ago about this finance issue. You didn't want to extend, get extra help. Then here you are, you failed an audit, and you gotta find some finance staff. There's an accounting shortage out there, people. Watch some Business Channel. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Paula. Next up is Rob and Joe Pattinson. Rob? Rob, we can't hear you. Can you hear Rob? There you are.
Yep.
Oh. Oh, I'm sorry, Rob, I know what I did. Thank you, Rob. I see no other hands.
Motion to adjourn?
So moved?
Moved by Brzeo, circulated by Noel. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. As opposed, we are adjourned at five to eleven. Beat the clock.
Hey, I would've said, I really appreciate Mark Thompson's reports, the Friday reports with what's coming up, Mark. Those are great.
Meeting's over, done.